I call to order the Highland Park Board of Education Hybrid Workshop Voting Meeting. Today, Monday, January 27th, 2025. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth time, date, and the location to be submitted for publication to the new, to the Home News Tribune and Courier-News and posted to the board's website at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the meeting adjourns for the evening. May I have roll call, please?
Dr. Beatty?
Here.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Here.
Dr. Coleman? Dr. Pixley?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Dr. Schoolman? Ms. Daniel?
Here.
Ms. Vardeman?
Here.
Ms. Voorhees?
We will now recess to executive session. Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA 10:4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss matters related to HIB and personnel. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10:4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I move that we recess to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are now going to reconvene to regular session. May I have roll call, please? Oh, Denise isn't here. Hold on.
We turned the heat up a little bit. We don't mean to freeze anybody out. Yeah, is that okay? No.
Actually, we have to wait two minutes.
Sorry.
Sorry, guys. We have to wait two minutes till seven.
Oh, no, that's a student.
Who is he?
Ethan, right here.
Mexican.
Okay.
Seven o'clock.
All right. Ready, do it.
All right, we're going to now reconvene to regular session. May I have roll call, please?
Dr. Beatty?
Here.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Here.
Dr. Coleman?
Here.
Dr. Pixley?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Dr. Schoolman?
Here.
Ms. Daniel?
Here.
Ms. Vardeman?
Here.
Ms. Voorhees?
Here.
Stand for the pledge.
And over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For communications, we had three come in, one regarding an incident on the way to school, one regarding the school calendar, and one regarding the alumni reunion. Our next on our agenda, number nine, is the approval of minutes. First, for the hybrid special public meeting for board retreat minutes for December 5th, 2024. Next, for the public meeting and executive session for December 16th, 2024. And then for the hybrid voting reorganization public meeting for January 2nd, 2025. I move that we approve these minutes.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardeman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our student representative report.
Got a long one tonight. Irving has ringed in the New Year celebrating our differences and thinking about dreams. They offer themselves to kick off our January celebration of Dr. Mun Luther King Jr., Muslim Heritage Month, and Lunar New Year. The end of the month will close with the Great Kindness Challenge.
Can you talk a little bit more into the mic?
The end of the month will close with the Great Kindness Challenge as a school and remembering how a simple act of kindness can make a tremendous impact on the school and each other. For this week, our students will receive an act of kindness checklist to go home, and our school family meeting will focus on the school's expectations of kindness and safety. Thank you to all the families participating in the "I Have a Dream" activity with your child. They're hanging in the front. And we are grateful that we truly have special students with us each day. Over the next month, for Irving, the yearly school service project to welcome the 100th Day of School, Irving will be collecting cans of cats and dog food and discussing the importance of kindness towards animals, and all students are welcome to send in a picture of their pet. The family, for Irving, the family evenings in February will focus on Lunar New Year celebration and having a family yoga night. More information will be sent home regarding both. Irving will have a global play day on February 5th, where our students will embrace a day of play focusing on highlighting the importance of unstructured play for students' mental and physical health. We will celebrate School Counseling Week and are so grateful to have Mr. Maruka. World Kindness Week happens in the middle of the month, and we will welcome the "We Are Gardeners" program that spreads seeds of emotional resilience and positive change in ourselves, our communities and that that spreads seeds of emotional resilience and positive changes in ourselves, our communities, and our world. The 100th Day of School is on February 13th, and Irving is excited to celebrate that and Friendship Day. Throughout the month, February will focus on Black History with classroom readings and the staff having Soul Food Friday and morning announcements to highlight the achievements, history, and contribution of African-Americans. All of our specialists will also focus on this for readings, musics, and projects for the month of February. So that's it for Irving. At Bartle, they've been kicking off the New Year with a focus on kindness and compassion. As January comes to a close, we're thrilled to participate in the Great Kindness Challenge, a week-long program dedicated to fostering a culture of kindness. This initiative aligns perfectly with our school's expectations to be kind, be responsible, and be respectful. Students will receive a Kind Acts Activity Challenge to inspire meaningful ways to show kindness to others, the environment, and themselves. While we encourage completing as many Kind Acts as possible at school, we hope this challenge inspires those students to carry kindness into their homes and communities. To make it even more fun, we'll have Dress Up Spirit Days to celebrate the joy of being kind and remind everyone that kindness matters. The kindness theme will carry into February with a huge focus on building a positive culture at Bartle. Thank you. Really appreciate that. It's a long one tonight. February 3rd to the 9th, we'll celebrate National School Counseling Week. You can give a big shout out to Ms. Tara Young for all she does to support the Bartle community and the HP School District. February 6th, the always amazing Lead You will visit for an assembly designed to teach students about peer friendships, social skills, and discovering the leader within themselves. February 7th, during our whole-school meeting, the American Heart Association will introduce the Kids' Heart Challenge. This program promotes physical and social, emotional health and teaches hands-only CPR through Finn's Mission. Students who complete the training will proudly participate in a hero parade around the building on February 28th. On the week of the 10th to the 14th, Bartle will celebrate World Kindness Week with special activities and events, giving students even more opportunities to spread kindness and lift one another up. And on the 13th, the students will be celebrating being 100 days brighter on 100th Day of School. Bartle is looking forward to a great month as they work together to make our school and community brighter, kinder, and stronger. So next, for the middle school. The middle school celebrated Muslim Heritage Month for the week of the 13th. Each day at the start of each class, Ms. Maher showed a Top 10 Countdown video of a famous Muslim and discussed their influence on the world today. Ms. Begonia's students watched a brief video and read a description of the astrolabe and how it was used for religious and secular purposes. Daily announcements were read by students providing insight to our school about Muslim heritage, and Ms. Masiel read one of the morning announcements in Urdu. One of the lunches in the cafeteria provides students with a taste of some traditional foods. So for the middle school, they also announced that the HPMS Peer Meditation Program is officially underway. There was two mediation sessions, and it was observed that both professionalism and dedication were shown by students. Thank you to Ms. Luxa, Ms. Berlou, Ms. Young, and our incredible peer mediators for launching this program so successfully. This initiative empowers students to take an active role in resolving conflicts, fostering a more supportive and respectful school environment. So it was also National Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. So the middle school held a virtual discussion, or is holding a virtual discussion, to explore what a healthy relationship looks like and the warning signs of an unhealthy one. There was a flyer sent out earlier this week, but this virtual event wanted to be shared. So for Spearware, if you want to support the middle school cheerleaders and the boys' basketball teams, click the following links to order some Spearware. And the Wellness Hub, Nurse Kelly provided a flyer about the norovirus and what you need to know if you or someone in the house gets the flu. Great work by the HPMS wrestling team last weekend, this weekend. Last week, the Owls won against Elizabeth and Carter F., and this past Saturday, the Owls wrestled in the small-school GMC tournament. The Owls won 24 matches at the tournament with 12 people placing. William Krasinski placed third, Keen Navea placed third, Logan Campbell placed third, Demetrius Papoutakis placed third, Zach Palmer placed second, Julian Walters placed second, Will Kyer-Matang placed second, Declan Ross-Aflo placed second, Jason Diamondstein placed first, and Tobias Guard plays first, as well as Rashad Walters placing. The Owls won the first-place team trophy, and this is the first time this has ever happened in Highland Park history. So now, lastly, for the high school. The 2025 to 2026 Program of Studies has been published. You can view it on our website under Family Resources. The Program of Studies highlights all of the information related to high school academic programming, from course offerings to advancement procedures to important dates and deadlines. We encourage parents and guardians to review the Program of Studies with their students as it holds a wealth of information. Scheduling for next year will start on the week of the January 27th. A course request verification will go out towards the end of the year, and this will be the final time students have to adjust their requests for the next school year. We have some cultural event celebrations we would like to highlight. From January 13th to the 16th, the High School Honored Muslim Heritage Month with daily announcements, featured dishes in the cafeteria and informative poster boards displayed outside Room 106, highlighting the many contributions of Muslim Americans. On the 23rd, the students hosted a Lunar New Year celebration from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And today commemorated Holocaust Remembrance Day with a guest speaker from the Holocaust and Human Rights Educational Center. Looking ahead, the high school has exciting plans for Black History Month in February and EDA Hall in March. The winter sports have had a strong beginning. Girls' basketball is off to an enforced start with big wins over Group Four schools Edison and Sayerville. Boys' basketball is 7-7 with nice wins over Danelle and Wardlaw, and the wrestling team beat Group Four West Windsor South along with some other big wins. Also, a major congrats to Noah Berlin-Langston, who placed first at GMC's, the best heavyweight wrestler in the county, which has not happened for Highland Park in the past 10 years. So tonight, going on right now, our Highland Park Mock Trial Team begins their competitions against other Middlesex County teams, so we wish them luck. And Highland Park DECA kicked off their competitive season on the 10th with their trip to King University for districts. At this competition, all DECA members must compete a role play of their chosen topic. DECA had over 100 members competing in various categories, and it was very successful, as now about 70 students qualified for the state competition between role plays and manuals. And that is all I have today.
Thank you for that incredible report. As always, does anybody have any questions for Seth? So much to celebrate this week. Thank you. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Cisco.
Good evening, everyone. So I have the pleasure to introduce Mr. Kevin DePayne, who's our acting principal for the middle school. I'd like to invite him up to the podium to say some words. Tonight, we are spotlighting a very special middle school student, Mr. DePayne.
Making sure this is on. Can I let go of this? Yes. All right. So I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight. If you may not know me already, I've been here about a year and maybe six months. I am Kevin DePayne, the acting principal at the middle school, but current assistant principal when Ms. Brady comes back. So I have the honor tonight to honor one of our students in the middle school. And I did write something, but I'd just like to ad lib a couple things first. I'm sure we all have the time. Logan's parents are here and his sister, so I could probably go on forever, and they would enjoy every moment of it. So, you know, I went into this profession real quick just to, you know, be a change in someone's life. And I started out as a teacher, and I knew I wanted to do more. And I got into, went back to school and became an administrator. And I feel like my experience and expertise in what I've done prior to this job has, you know, guided me to what I should, what I want people and students and parents and caregivers to, you know, embrace in a school system. And I've been in a couple districts, and I feel the closeness and the smallness of this district really makes it very unique. And I'm able to get to know people at a very intimate level, more so than I thought I would be able to do. So with that being said, since this night is for the student, not myself, I will take questions later if anybody wants to know about my background. But I have something read, and I just, like I said, I can talk off the cusp, but I just want to focus on the reason why we're here. So I will read this, and I will provide this for Logan and his family to have. So star student spotlight goes to Logan Campbell. And I wrote, "Role model, captain, creative, deserving, curious, motivated, positive, focused, exceptional." These are just a few words that describe Highland Park Middle School's star student, Logan Campbell. Although I'm relatively new to Highland Park, it didn't take long for me to connect with students and truly understand who they are beyond their peers. I first met Logan last year as a seventh grader. And sidebar, statistically shown, seventh grade is the hardest year for students to get through. And if you can make it through that, you know, in a positive manner, there's only going forward and up after that. So I met him as a seventh grader, and we quickly formed a relationship. At times, Logan would find himself in the main office, where we engaged in honest conversations, him presenting his version of events, and then me sharing my perspective based on the facts at hand. Logan was persistent, and while he sometimes struggled to see how his actions or words affected others, it was evident that he had the potential for growth. Throughout these moments, Logan's mom and father remained a steadfast source of support and advocacy, always just a phone call away. What Logan may not have realized then was that I, too, was advocating for him, just as I do for all 350 students at HPMS. As the year progressed and through countless conversations with his parents, teachers, coaches, and myself, Logan began to recognize areas for growth. My message to him remained consistent. Change happens when you're ready, and our job is to support you through both the highs and lows. So when I stepped into this role of acting principal and was given the responsibility of selecting our star student, although I did have other options, Logan Campbell was the first name that came to mind. This year, I've witnessed a remarkable transformation in Logan. From the way he carries himself in the hallways to his respectful interactions with adults, to the positive relationships he fosters with his peers. His growth in emotional intelligence and soft skills stands out far more than his past need to justify his way out of challenging situations. I have a lot of pages, but don't worry, it's almost over. I can't speak for Logan, but I believe that through self-reflection and unwavering support of those around him, he has embraced the person he aspires to be, the person we now proudly recognize as our star student. So congratulations, Logan. Your growth and leadership inspires us all.
Congratulations again, Logan, and it's wonderful to see Mr. DePayne here to support you and your family as well. I could tell by some of the nonverbal, some nonverbal action that they are immensely proud of you and happy for your growth, as I know Mr. DePayne and everyone at the middle school. So stand tall and congratulations again. So to the Campbell family and Mr. DePayne, you are more than welcome to stay for a lovely meeting that is filled with lots of exciting information. However, I do understand that you probably have other things to do, family to attend to dinner and whatnot, so please feel free to leave when ready. Thank you. Okay, so I am going to switch everyone's attention to my presentation tonight, which is on Student Support Services Program Evaluations. So some of this work. No, none of this work? Am I doing this? Oh, okay, all right. Just, oh, too much. Back.
Easy to handle the screen for you.
Wait, am I clicking it or are you clicking it? Okay, okay. I'm not gonna, can you just click forward? Thank you. I don't, okay, thank you. Okay. So recently, we've had a number of, in program evaluations, a lot of times what we do is we look at our programming. We are constantly reviewing and evaluating it, and we go through our protocol and implement changes as needed. So one of the things I wanted to discuss tonight was two, excuse me, two prior program evaluations and sort of one current that we just received. And sort of couple them all, because when I look through all three of them, the theme really for all of them is about student success and supporting students. So we're looking at ways to strengthen our commitment to our student success. So tonight, I'm going to provide you with an overview of the three programs that were evaluated. Some of the key strengths and achievements that came out of these independent program evaluations. Highlight some areas in which the program evaluation gave as recommendations for improvement, the areas for improvement, the recommendations these program evaluators gave us, and then our district action plan. Oftentimes, program evaluations come from people that may not be knowing our budget or in that specific K-12 space of budgeting and administration. So it's important to kind of highlight that sometimes they just don't know the nuances. Like, it's very easy to recommend that we hire a whole bunch of people. However, our budget might not warrant that. So I'll highlight, but there are some good things that came out of it. So the three programs that I'd like to discuss tonight is RISE, which is our alternative in-school suspension model. So RISE is a restorative justice and social-emotional growth initiative that replaced a more punitive in-school suspension model. So according to the state definition, it's still in-school suspension. However, we moved it away from being a punitive model to more of a supportive model. This program evaluation was done over the summer, this past summer, 2024. The MTSS, which is the Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, which is a comprehensive and academic behavioral support plan that exists throughout the entire district. That one was done in the spring of 2023. And our school counseling program, which was done in the fall of 2024, which provides academic, emotional, and career guidance frameworks. So those are our school counselors, maybe formerly known as guidance counselors, are rebranded to school counselors. So first, our RISE program. So some of the highlights that came from an evaluation of the program, some of the strengths, were that we do have a restorative justice framework fostering accountability and growth. And so that was looked at from grades two, well, really, grade three through 12. So that's what we call RISE Junior at Bartle and then RISE at Middle and High School. So it does have a framework fostering accountability and growth that we do integrate social-emotional learning and tailored supports for students. We provide reflective activities and logical consequences. And we have seen some positive impacts in the restorative work, particularly more so at Bartle. Some of the challenges that came out of the RISE program evaluation were inconsistent resources across school levels. Some things like lack of dedicated space were reported. It's just kind of a moving target on every year where we can put the in-school suspension or the RISE program depending on our needs. Limited counselor support, so, you know, having three counselors at the high school, one at the middle school, and one at Bartle has kind of limited the support sometimes that we can give depending on the number of students that need RISE and the amount of days that they would need it and other issues that are coming up in which the counselor, you know, needs to be there. Some of the challenges that were also presented include training gaps for staff implementing restorative practices in RISE. So in some, like Bartle had consistent staff that were overseeing RISE. Middle School was trying to be a little bit more consistent, but it was based on teacher schedule. And we tried to do it based on teachers that have had restorative practice training. And then the middle school was dedicated staff that had the training. So middle school in particular, when it's teachers that rotate in, we try to get the ones that have the training, but there's different levels of training that all people that help us with RISE have. So there are some gaps there. And their staff inconsistency was a challenge, like I just mentioned. And trauma support remain challenges as well. What we're finding in our data is that some of our students that need Tier Three therapeutic support are sort of constantly going into RISE. We're not necessarily seeing that, but that's a lot of our students that are coming with more severe trauma at a Tier Three support. So trying to get them that level of support seems to be a challenge. And then we've, one of our challenges also has been the limited data collection on efficacy. So to really report on that is very hard, because we tried to go back in time to find data, you know, early on in its implementation. And just for reference, this wasn't an evaluation of restorative practices in general across the district. So they weren't looking at how often teachers do circles in their classroom or that kind of restorative work. It was very particular for in-school suspension. But we didn't necessarily have a way to, in the past, when it was implemented early on before my tenure, to really track the data. We're starting to do that now and put it together in a way so that administrators and school leadership teams can really review that data and make sense of it to help our students. For our multi-tiered systems of support, Student Support MTSS, some of the strengths that they found include effective intervention tools that we have, a lot of them. There were so many, but some of them include foundations, so implementing foundations for phonics instruction, Read 180, the Teen and Tween Center support, Orton-Gillingham Certified Teachers, so we train all of our elementary teachers in OG, and much more. So MTSS is really a Tier One, Tier Two support. So that's really, what I mean by Tier One, Tier Two is at the teaching level. So teachers in the classroom, if a student is slightly struggling, they go through Intervention and Referral Services. And then from there, through Intervention and Referral Services, we can provide support for students to say, maybe try this strategy, this technique. If it's behavioral, do we need a behavioral plan? What are some things that a teacher could do in the classroom, you know, to provide that, to provide support? Sometimes it gets to a Tier Two, where we have Read 180, Math 180. So that would be like, depending on the, each grade level, each school does things differently, whether it's a push-out model or pull-in, push-in or pull-out model for Tier Two interventions. There's a strong emphasis on SEL and life skills. We have a very collaborative elementary-level process for staff implementation. And the strengths are that we have strong benchmarks, benchmark assessments, and structure. Some of the challenges for the MTSS were that we have, we had, one of the challenges reported at the time was inconsistent criteria for entering and exit tiers of support, that we had inconsistent data-tracking systems, and overreliance on interventionists for non-MTSS tasks. For example, the report found that we were pulling our intervention teachers to be substitutes when the substitute count was low and we were having hard times. So it was like, oh, we need a So it was like, oh, we need a long-term sub or somebody's out. Because they don't really have a class, they're pulling students to do intervention, it was just kind of easier at that point to put the, put those teachers in. Student scheduling at the secondary level seems to be quite a bit of a challenge. I know I've spoken of this before, but one of the interventions for math and ELA at the middle school requires that it's a class period. And instead of the way the middle school schedule works, to be able to get everything in, they would have to potentially give up world language. And so the parents have to agree to the intervention. And if a child really likes Spanish and they don't want the intervention, then they go into Spanish and they don't necessarily get that intervention. So student scheduling at the secondary level is a challenge. And another challenge was, we didn't have a comprehensive list of, list of resources and interventions. For the school's counseling program evaluation, some of the strengths reported that our school counselors excel in rapport building and community connections, that there is a strong referral system, particularly with the teen center. There's a development of a comprehensive counseling framework in progress. So that was a strength that we had. And that our social-emotional learning programming is highly present at the younger grades. I'm not sure. Oh, it's our new ice machine. Okay. I was wondering, I'm like, what am I saying? That is like weirding people out right now. I'm looking at nonverbal feedback and I'm like, okay, it's the ice machine. It's, yeah. This is the, it's not me, it's you, it's you, it's not me. It's the ice machine, so I apologize. Our new ice machine. We'll have to report back that it is loud. It's making ice if anybody needs some ice. Thank you, Angela. Next. Some of the challenges reported from the school counseling program evaluation that there's some role ambiguity and misalignment with ASCA standards. So ASCA is the Association Governing School Counselors. And so when you look at what their, the standards are, there was some sort of misalignment on what our school counselors do versus what the standards are that a school counselor should do. For example, involvement in, like Highland Park, like, you know, investigations such as HIBs and things like that, that they are test coordinating. So there are things that they're involved with here in Highland Park that don't exactly fall under the standard of what a school counselor should do, but it's just what came out of the report. That they have a high workload due to clerical duties. The principals have a limited understanding of the role of the school counselor. And that there is some social-emotional learning programming at the middle and high school level. So those were some areas of challenge. So some of the, so the analysis of the challenge, so actually, what you can see through all three program evaluations in terms of student support is that there's a common theme in terms of shared challenges that I want to highlight. In particular, is resource limitations. So it seems regardless of whether it's MTSS school counseling or our in-school suspension program, some of the resources are very limited, including staffing, dedicated spaces, and things like that. There's inconsistent data collection and progress tracking and training and professional development gaps. In addition, some are analysis of the challenges by their particular, unique to the program for RISE space, the staffing inconsistency and disjointed implementation. For MTSS, a lack of universal benchmarks for progress and for counseling excessive duties outside of the role of the school counselor. So those in general are unique for each program. So some of the recommendations that came out of the report for our in-school suspension program, RISE, some of the recommendations they suggest include secure funding for additional counselors and dedicated program spaces, expand professional development on restorative justice practices, excuse me, and enhance transition processes between school levels. For MTSS, the recommendations include standardize the assessment tools and criteria across the schools, increase support for interventionists to focus on core duties, and implement consistent data tracking systems. And for school counseling, the recommendations include reassigning administrative tasks like HIB investigations and state testing, develop district-wide comprehensive counseling framework, and increase SEL programming at the secondary level. So what I did was I broke up our action plan into steps that we've already completed, because some of these, they've all been done, some of them last year and the summer, and then even in the fall. There are things that we've been immediately doing. So I want to highlight the steps that are already completed. And then I will talk about sort of maybe future goals that we have for the challenges that we face. So steps that are already completed since the program evaluation completed for RISE is that we've created restorative activities and lessons on common behaviors. One of the things we discussed recently at my monthly meetings with the assistant principals was to actually put them in a shared space. So that's one of the things we discovered through this work is that, for example, there's something really great that Brooke might be doing at Bartle that can be scalable. And so if they're only meeting once a month to talk about them, they're not sort of being able to access them in real time. So we talked about sort of collating them into a shared Google Drive so, and organize them by topic so that the high school, the middle school, and Bartle have access to that shared resources, and they can be scalable. Collecting and reviewing discipline data monthly, so we've been doing that already to see if RISE is having a positive impact on students. So like I said, one of the areas that we struggled with before was figuring out if, if, looking at collecting the data and then using it in a way that makes sense. So the school leadership teams and administration collects and reviews that discipline data monthly, and so does the board to look at that. Using referral data to provide targeted interventions for tier-one support to be proactive. Some of the steps already completed for the multi-tiered student supports, including, we introduced a unified tracking system for our data collection. So we're using Frontline as our tool. It made sense. We use Frontline for IEP Direct. So it's in our absent management, and it just made sense as a tool that our staff are familiar with. It is a little clunky. We're finding that it's a little hard to implement, but we're navigating and making our way through that with some support from Frontline. Created, we have created a tiered list of MTSS interventions and support, and we did it in three buckets, academic, social-emotional, and behavioral. So what we found was that early on in the program evaluation, one of the things was that some staff didn't realize that they could refer through the INRS process, students with behavioral challenges. They thought it was just academic. So we've shifted the way we communicate the INRS plan and MTSS, that we have supports for all three buckets. Immediately, what we stopped doing, once I heard that we were pulling interventionists to be subs, I immediately put a stop to that. So we do not pull interventionist substitutes. And I think the data that's been reported out through the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, at least over the past year, has been positive in terms of seeing students going in and coming out, and that we're really, through that also defined clear entrance and exit criteria, it's all being used effectively. And we've already completed conducting regular trainings with the INRS teams and staff. So we did one in September, so we do yearly ones, and then mid-year ones, not only on the software, but on the criteria, updating our resources, and making sure that everything is communicated effectively. And then steps Elizabeth Assamo and her team have taken for the school counseling program evaluation that we've already completed. We've provided clerical support for paperwork and meeting coordination for INRS. So one of the things that they found, actually through both the MTSS program evaluation and the school counseling, was that the school counselors were like leading the intervention and referral services meetings. But one of the recommendations we got back from the program evaluation was dividing up the tasks. So administratively, it's not on the school counselors to call the parents, to collect the data, to run the meetings, to write the minutes, to send the emails, to send the letters, to collect the data, to organize the data. It's a lot of work, and that was just the school counselor. So you can imagine for someone at Bartle, and we have one school counselor, or at Irving, when we get a lot of intervention and referral service students, that it can be a very daunting task. So we put structures in place, and we use the model that the state recommends for INRS to be able to divide those tasks. And that's part of our training yearly too with the INRS committee is, you know, the procedures and our responsibilities and making sure we divide up that work so it's not just on one person. And we've already put together that school counselors have bimonthly meetings with their supervisor, as well as four department meetings a year. So I thank Elizabeth, once we promoted her to that position, she's really taken, taken hold of the department prior to Elizabeth's position. It's been a while since we, apparently, we used to have a director of council guidance way back in the day, prior to, way, way, yeah, Laura's saying way, way back in the day. So it was really on the principals to manage the staff member or these staff members. And like you could see from the program evaluation, they didn't necessarily know what they, their job was supposed to be. So, I mean, to not, not pointing any fingers, it was just that there was something that kind of just went, you know, kind of the wayside over the years when you, you know, cut things and shift things around. So we're happy to have Elizabeth in that position, and she's really learned a lot. We have the, we expanded the role of the lead counselor to be district-wide as well, which has been really helpful to support Elizabeth in that role. So now I'd like to talk about our future goals. Some of the work the administrative team is doing for our future goals for our in-school suspension program. So we are making a plan to provide ongoing professional development and coaching. We're discussing ways to increase vertical articulation between the schools. We're looking at ways to continue implementing tier-one and tier-two behavioral interventions. So the hope is that if we can strengthen the work, and I know we've seen that out of Bartle, for example. So Bartle's a really, really good example of where we strengthen the work of tier-one and tier-two at the school, at the teacher level. So if students are getting the support they need at the teacher level, there's less referrals going out to the office level that might warrant the need for an in-school suspension. So we're continuing to look at ways to support the teachers locally in their classrooms to help mitigate any behavioral issues that might come up to an office-level referral. In addition, we're also looking to ways to share positive results and success, which I know came out of the work that we discussed at one of the Equity and Excellence Committee meetings with Ann Gregory. She found that the data suggests that if you share, just continue to highlight positive results and success, it strengthens culture and climate, and hopefully that can help us change a culture as well, maybe particularly at the middle and high school. In addition, January 2025, we're going to be, which is now, hopefully you've all taken an opportunity to complete the NJSci Culture and Climate Survey, but we're beginning the implementation of that survey, which I know I've spoken about, or Elizabeth may have spoken about a couple of presentations ago, about how robust it is to be able to link the data of that climate survey back to actionable items, which will hopefully help the tier-one and tier-two behavioral interventions. Our hope is, for in-school and out-of-school suspension, what people have to understand is we have to report that to the state because we are removing a student from their instructional environment. And that is not what we want to do. They do get academic support in RISE, so part of being in an in-school suspension is an academic component, but they're still being removed from that, that situation. We don't want to do that. So our hope is that we don't have to do it. And so if we strengthen tier-one and tier-two behaviors, the hope is that they, they don't have, they don't have to need it. Some future goals for MTSS and INRS. We'll continue monitoring INRS and data collection processes. We'll continue to update our tiered list of interventions, so we do that every year, and continue providing training and support to staff. And I know that part of our goal with our program evaluation for special education was to include INRS and looking at how that all works. So we'll have, you know, sort of a glance of, I know there's areas in which our future goals, so look at a snapshot from the last time they came in to monitor and give us the report to now, what's working and where are areas that we can strengthen that as well. And some future goals for school counseling. Administration will try and consider other options for tasks, such as anti-bullying specialists and testing coordinators. I can't make any promises, as, you know, we're limited in the staff that have the ability. For example, anti-bullying specialists, the state gives you very specific requirements on who can be your anti-bullying specialist in the building. And given that we have sometimes very small, limited staff, sometimes it ends up on that person. Sometimes HIB investigations can take 10-plus hours. So we have to be mindful on kind of who we're pulling, pulling for that as well. So, so we'll consider options and try some different things and see how it goes. Some future goals for school counseling also include that building administration will implement and monitor INRS protocols with fidelity. So that was an issue that we found. The school counseling program evaluation said that some of our school counselors were still doing a lot of that work, even though we had put in systems and processes. So since building administration really runs their INRS committees, we're really looking to them to try to implement and monitor those protocols with fidelity so that it doesn't fall on our school counselors. To finalize a district-wide comprehensive counseling program, which is creating a school, so Elizabeth is creating a counseling advisory committee comprising of caregiver, students, and staff to provide feedback about counseling services. So I know that's on her radar, so look out for that soon. And then she'll use that to create a, with her team, a comprehensive counseling program, so it'll have stakeholder input. She will also be looking to implement more SEL at the secondary level. So we're looking at our school counselors at middle and high school to do more social-emotional learning lessons with the students. And if budget allows, consider funding an additional counselor, particularly at Bartle, because they have about 500 students, about the same as the high school and only one school counselor. If it allows, or maybe it'd be like a, you know, shared Bartle-middle-school type of situation, we're not really sure. But again, it's a consideration. I'm not sure if the budget will allow, but definitely on our radar. In addition, one of the things that came from all of this work was really looking at our healing-centered practices. And I know Equity and Excellence Report will, will share about this. But one of the things that we found was this overall lack of, of, maybe not framework, but foundation, that's probably the best way I could put it. Some of the things that we've put in place, such as restorative practices or trauma-informed instruction, have some good things happening in pockets, but not universal across the district. So we love that good things are happening, but how do we expand that? How do we celebrate that? How do we make sure everyone feels supported in this? Everyone knows what we stand for and how we operate. So we're looking at potentially doing healing-centered practices, which is inclusive of restorative practices, but includes much more. And that is, it includes trauma-informed foundations. So one of the things that we're finding a lot with our students now is a lot of trauma, a lot of trauma. So restorative practices are great, a lot of the work that we do is great, but I think our staff need more support in understanding students that come with significant trauma. The restorative accountability, equity and inclusion, and relationship building. So right now, I was hoping to have a finalized draft for everybody tonight. Unfortunately, I don't. Part of it is actually predicated on the budget. So I have some ideas in mind, but it really is going to depend on state funding and where we are with the budget on what we want to support. So I don't want to make any promises that the budget can't sustain. But I will say the draft of the plan will include, it will come, but to what extent, the plan will be, it will be in a way that is, has a foundation, has job descriptions, has accountability measures, ways to track data, it will have ways that we evaluate, whether it's the staff involved or things like that, just so that it, everyone knows roles and responsibilities with this plan. And our hope is to provide the students more of the tier-one, tier-two supports that they need just in general, looking at all three of those buckets for student support. So hopefully that'll come probably in the spring now, just because, again, we're looking at where we are with budget. And so I'll just, you know, conclude that together, we're building a stronger foundation to ensure every student receives the support they need to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. And so I think combined, looking at some of the areas that we have challenges, we're already facing them head-on, and we're continuing to work through those. And, you know, as the budget unfolds, that, that plan to really put more of this in action will be forthcoming. So I'll open it up for questions and feedback from the board. Thank you.
Well, I start. Thank you so much for that very comprehensive presentation. You know, I want to establish that this is very complex, all of these things built upon each other. You know, they all, they all contribute, they have school counseling and RISE. All are embedded within the MTSS model. And even the MTSS model, as it's being built, takes a few years to actually get up and running to the extent at which it's functioning really efficiently. So I appreciate all of the work that's been done so far, because it does take a lot of time. And so to have an evaluation done already and to kind of has some grows and glows from that, I think is, is, you know, very useful for us. One of the things that I did want to suggest is that one of the goals that you have is to work with the council- one of the goals that you have is to work with the counseling department, or actually, no, just within the MTSS, especially with INRS teams, and really kind of honing in on training, not just them in interventions, but also in teaming practices. Because like, we oftentimes get a lot of people together to discuss students, and we have many, many different ways of discussing students. But we don't have a lot of ways of discussing systemic interventions. And so one of the ways that we can really monopolize on our teaming conversations is by discussing like the the impact the intervention is having on group data, because we can make simple decisions about interventions very quickly and easily by looking at whether the intervention is having impact on the group rather than on the individual child. Because if you wind up finding students are not responding as a group, or if you have a statistically significant group of students that aren't responding, then it's not necessarily a child issue or student issue, it's an intervention issue. So really kind of training these, our staff to to really dive into those teaming practices where you're not just having student-based conversations, but also effective and efficient, systems-based conversations. And we can probably draw from the Labor Collaborative about the, from that. Maybe even soon in February with the Labor Collaborative with problem solving, our problem solving training. So that's just one way that we can look at it. But there are other models of constructing teaming conversations and training around those as well that we can look into too.
I have just one clarifying question. Because, you know, there were a lot of acronyms used in this. Can you just clarify what INRS is for anyone who's listening at home in case, in case they don't know?
Sure, it's Intervention and Referral Services.
So that would be, for example, if a kid is falling behind, like what are?
Yeah, so if I'm a classroom teacher and I find that a student isn't responding to either, you know, behaviorally, like there, I try every tool in my toolbox as a teacher, and the student isn't, you know, behaving or having some problematic issues. I would refer that student to Intervention and Referral Services because there's a team of people that have more tools in their toolbox that can be able to maybe give me that. So what I would do is make a recommendation and say, here is all the data that suggests that I have some concerns about this student and what what else can I do? And then that team, so it's all based on data. So I, as a teacher, I can't just say, oh, this kid is just acting out and I have no data. I just don't want this kid in my class. Like, that's not what it is. It has to come to say, I've tried X amount of interventions, this is the problematic behavior, this is how it's impacting the classroom, or this is how it's impacting academics and things like that. And then I submit that through a process to INRS. And then the Intervention and Referral Services team takes that information, a letter is sent to parents saying, your child's been recommended for Intervention and Referral Services. They review the information there, and then they provide the teacher or teachers very specific strategies to help the student with a data collection tool in mind. So the idea is they would come back and say, okay, maybe you need to try a insert behavioral strategy. Here, try this strategy, and this is how you're going to collect data. You should collect data once a day, once a week, once a month, whatever the data is. And this is the kind of data you're going to collect. And then input the data into the system, and then they do their check-in meeting. At their check-in meeting, they review that data to see if the intervention is working for that student. If it's not, they'll try another intervention. So the idea is they try to exhaust all the tools in their toolbox through our laundry list of intervention services. So for a behavioral student, it might be be something locally at a tier one level of the teacher. It's like, okay, I tried, the data suggests that the needle is not moving. So the INRS committee may say, okay, well, why don't we try a tier two support, which is our tween center or our teen center, you know, and then reach out to the parents. Would you be okay with them seeing, you know, one of our, you know, psychologists, social workers, mental health counselors to try to help this behavior? And then they get, then, you know, it's, they're going to go three times a week, once a week. It's like physical therapy, I'm going to go, you know, a half hour, three times a week or something like that. We're going to collect the data that way and see if that is working. And if we see the needle move, we continue it. Sometimes we see the needle move and we have to increase intensity or something like that. So every situation is different. If we exhaust all the tools in our toolbox and the data is just showing that the needle is not moving at all for these students, then they can make a referral, they recommend a referral for to child study team. So what we do is we just try to look at that data first. And if that date, if we are moving the needle, we just continue it, or we intensify it or something like that. So that's what we're, we do to to try to help with students in need of support.
One thing I was going to say too, what I think is really important in this is we're constantly looking at the data. So, you know, in Equity and Excellence, it's been an ongoing conversation. And one of the things that I thought was, you know, really useful is, you know, when you see exactly what you were talking about, which maybe was, I think, important to highlight is, you know, we are, we are making changes and doing things within BARTLE, for example, and really seeing kind of what places where some of the strategies are effective. So, you know, I think that's a continual kind of point of feedback. And and I know in our conversations and highlighting some of the things that we've done over the past year and seeing, you know, things like incidences and and academics and all that kind of improving. You know, it's kind of a model of, you know, what can we take from that? That we're going to kind of expand to the other, to the other schools. And, you know, I think that's a lot of what we've been focusing on too, where it's worked.
What can we do in cases where the the parents don't agree to the intervention? What's the next step beyond that? Like you were saying, in in middle school, if they would prefer to to take languages instead?
I mean, so what we offer is try to offer, so the middle school has, I don't know the extent of it, so I'd have to probably reach out specifically to their INRS committee and look back at the document because it gets updated, it's a living document. But they have lunch and learn, they have a program after school Wise Connection. So like they offer, depending if it's academic or SEL. So lunch and learn for academic support, so essentially like tutoring or homework help and things like that. We recommend students that might reach out to, and we connect them with an NHS tutor, a student at the high school, NHS tutors are great, we love them. So we try to to figure out other options to get them the support they need. But if they're in intervention for math or ELA, it's because they're significantly behind grade level. If students are, again, depending on the content, but if they're like a grade behind level or something like that, the expectation is we can differentiate instruction in the classroom. So if I'm a sixth grade student, you know, and I'm, some of the standards, I'm still operating at a fifth grade level, I could probably close that gap by differentiating my instruction in the classroom. But if I'm a sixth grade student, I'm offering, I'm accessing the the math at a second or third grade level, that's pretty significant. And so what we find is the students aren't successful. So having them in a class, the intervention class, is not a a class in which they're getting tutoring for the current. It's about saying, okay, how can we give you some strategies to try to close the gap so that you can be successful in your math class? And so we really try to have meetings and encourage our our families to participate. The other struggle at the middle school is that oftentimes we do have students that do qualify for both English and math, and I, we just can't fit both of them in the schedule. So that's been a little bit hard too. So we're trying to look at some other options. But it then would be like maybe less phys ed time because they're over the minutes that they're required to have for phys ed, but everyone loves phys ed, you know, and our kids need to get out and run and and exercise and stuff like that. So it it becomes a little bit of a challenge. Our hope honestly is that if we can, if the board would, and the budget would like to, we'd like to sustain the interventionist, especially at BARTLE and Irving, because we're finding great success and that data is forthcoming at the end of this month, that hopefully over time, we don't hopefully need as much of that at the at the middle level. That's what we hope. I mean, we obviously have students that come in from other districts that may still need it. But our hope is that maybe our, you know, students that start with us early on in elementary and go through the Highland Park system, that we can close those gaps early enough. And that's what we're seeing. We're seeing the exit, the entrance criteria is clearly defined, and the exit criteria. And we're actually exiting students out of intervention, which means we're getting them in, we're closing the gap, and getting them back into their classroom. So we are finding success with that. And then the hopes is that then over time, at the middle school, it won't be as, hopefully as needed.
So I'm really interested in this, I guess, got this right, healing, healing centered practices. Maybe I moved off Equity and Excellence now, so I don't think I heard about it before, but it sounds really interesting. And, you know, one of the, one of the issues we were seeing with the RISE program was that there was a, you know, you know, a small cohort of of kids who seemed to be sort of cycling, repeat cycling through it, they weren't really being reached, and, you know, frequent flyers, if the term was, but it wasn't working for them. And so I'm just wondering if if you have diagnosed, and I'm just trying to connect the dots here, if you sort of diagnosed part of the problem as that the reason the RISE program didn't seem to be working there, and the the RISE evaluation put forth a bunch of reasons for that, you know, resources, staff, you know, not quite buying in, various things, space, inconsistency. But it seems like you may have identified an additional reason, which is that the RISE wasn't directly addressing the trauma they were experiencing. And that was, and this trauma was sort of inhibiting them from being able to benefit from the RISE processes. That's interesting, I think that's compelling. I was just wondering if you could say a bit more about sort of your your discovery process there? And I guess, I mean, I I think it's really interesting. I do, I mean, some of the issues identified, challenges the RISE program, they're identified by the valuation. You know, staff buy-in, resources, I mean, you know, healing complex trauma doesn't get any easier. And so I'm wondering how you plan to have it succeed when it may run into some of the same staffing, resources, space challenges that the RISE program does?
Some great questions. So the discovery process really, enlightenment actually came. One of the things that I did early on was when we were looking at the discipline data, we started parsing it out by student. So before it was just, this is how many students were special ed that were disciplined, this is how many, you know, students, like black students, white students, et cetera. And then it was every month, what, where is the bar on the bar graph? But what I wanted to do was look at it by students and say, okay, the students, every month, what is happening with these students? So that was the data we were looking at, student ID, during the month of December, what happened? The month of, you know, September, October, November? And are we seeing that it's consistent? Are we seeing very specific times? Because oftentimes, students that come, what we're seeing with trauma, it's like when they're transitioning back to school during holidays. There are very key points in which trauma triggers students. So we started looking really closely at that. And then what I saw was some of our students were like, one time here, or one time there. And I mean, quite frankly, I don't know if you've hung out with a middle school kid recently, but, you know, they are silly sons of guns and, you know, do some some behavior, right? That's middle school-esque. So like, that kind of stuff, you're like, all right, so they get in, you know, and maybe the second time they were in later that year was a different sort of reason. So, you know, we kind of consider that a win if they're in and they're not back in it again. What we were finding with some of these students, we actually started putting a tag on our students that, at the time, we were calling, we call them our OWL students now, but before they were our LINK students, so students that were receiving the tier three therapeutic support. So our students in the therapeutic support program classified emotional regulation impairment, which could mean that, may or may not, every student is different, but sometimes that these, their behaviors are a manifestation of their disability, or if it's just there's other issues going on. So these tier three support students, and what I was looking at with the data, these, some of these kids are homeless, suffering, you know, and and being exposed to domestic violence and and substance abuse and things like that. And that's what we were finding with some of these, like, really repeat offenders. And so we were thinking about it, like, the restorative practices are good, but when they're facing fight-or-flight mode and in and severe trauma, they're going to need more than just a couple of times in in our RISE program. So that really, parsing out that data and looking at it, one, who's who's sort of our, who are these students that are not being sort of restored back to the community and restoring and repairing the harm that they've caused? But the other piece too is, when are those things happening? And maybe we can rev up our support if it's like back to school is a hard time, December is a hard time. If there's key months in which historically, like, our students are coming, you know, with some issues. What can we beef up in terms of our support? So we've really been trying to unpack that data a lot. And so we're hoping that the work that we can do with healing-centered engagement really can focus on that. So it's, for that to succeed, the foundation has to include, what I love about the work that we're going to hopefully be engaging in, includes at least a multi-year level of professional development and coaching. So it's one thing to give, everyone says, more professional development, more professional development, but oftentimes, one-time workshops are, the data does actually suggest that it's not effective. A coaching model, getting that feedback to our teachers and our staff often has to be timely, it has to be ongoing. And so that's the work that we're looking at is to provide, to look for that sustained piece. We've tried to bring in some of these people that specifically we've used in the past for restorative practices, but they come in and do a one-shot workshop, or we hire them for coaching and then they don't show up. And, you know, they're, we're paying them and they're not coming. So we've been finding a little bit of lapse in trying to to get that work done through some models that are proposed either at the state level and locally through NJPSA. They provide coaching, it's very clear how many times they come a year, how many years we can do this, and what this model looks like. So that's the piece that's really important that you're going to see when I produce the the document, is that it's not just, hey, I'm doing it the next couple of months and let's hope for the best. It's a year one model, a year two model, and a year three model. So it has to be able to sustain the test of time, that it's, we're really committed to this work because buy-in is going to take some time. But it can't just be like, I'm going to put this in, and then, and then that's it. There really needs to be a push for this that involves year one, or really this year, is training, administration, and Board of Ed, because community, there's community engagement piece, which we didn't have in the past. So it really comes with a community engagement piece, a staff piece, a caregiver piece, a student piece, community resources and support. So it actually, your team or this requires that you have community members involved in your group at each building level. So it really is a whole community effort for for buy-in. So training leadership and Board of Ed, then we're training staff, then we're training students and caregivers. So there's going to be a lot, you'll see layers of that as you go through. And I think that's areas in the in the past that maybe we fell a little short as a district to really have a comprehensive framework so that anybody can pick it up and say, here's where we are in the evaluation, you know, here, here's where we are in the implementation process, and here's where we're going.
I really like that holistic approach because I think like, it makes it a lot more sustainable. And it really does help the the culture and climate here. I did have a question in regards to, because you did mention INRS, which for the longest time I thought was INRS until I saw it on paper. You said, mentioned that teachers can actually call for behavior issues, even though it's not necessarily academic, in instances where there are behavior issues for whatever reason, or because, so behavior issues are caused because they're not below grade level, but above grade level. Do we have any kind of differentiation or interventions for those children?
Yeah, so that's a, thank you, that's a really good example as well. If a student, if that is what is founding, it's like academic, it's it's impeding it because they're not actually hitting their potential. So they might be at grade level, but the behaviors are happening, it's impeding them to go and have access beyond that. Absolutely, that that can be. We have our legal program for our gifted and talented program, which exists. Early on in our early elementary school is advanced learning plan, that it's access through our fourth and fifth grade. For grades K through two, it's STEM enrichment for all students. And then we offer it for math enrichment, math advancement, starting in seventh grade, and then access at the high school. So so that would be if they're, if they needed very, like, tier two or tier three support, but tier one, they can provide those supports for teachers to say, hey, how about you differentiate your instruction in this category? So if you ask at the building level, if you want to know who your Intervention and Referral Services team are, it includes teachers, the interventionist, child study team for consultation, building principals, school counselor, school psychologist, teen center. So it is a real good, strong, strong group of people that come together that and that bring all of that to the table. So some of the JENA teachers that sit on that committee can say, oh, try this intervention for for the student that needed, that needs to go maybe deeper into the standard or something like that, or above the standard.
And is it something that we could actually do at the lower levels as well, like the primary?
Yeah, I mean, it it should be happening. If it's not, then that's, again, some feedback that I can bring when we look at, you know, definitely something I can bring to the Cabangno Institute when they're, when they're looking at this to say, hey, you know, what we might be missing the mark on giving access for students that might be gifted and talented. Can you look into that when they do their program evaluation? And I can definitely have Donna's team look at that and then provide us some feedback and recommendations, absolutely.
And how do we test for, or how do?
We don't, we don't, we don't provide, we don't really test for. We don't, we don't, we don't provide, um, we don't really test for gifted and talented so much. It's that if students are, um, you know, doing well and sort of finishing things and doing well, and they have strong comprehension. And, you know, um, we try to give them, you know, if they have multiple ways for strategies, like if it's math, do multiple strategies, multiple ways and things like that. Um, it's at that point, it's the teachers to say, okay, I've kind of exhausted all the tools in my toolbox to be able to differentiate. Now I need support because this, I need them to go deeper and I don't know how to do it. And as a result, they're becoming a little problematic, maybe behaviors in my class. And then the, you know, oftentimes it could be maybe some problem-based learning, project-based learning, things like that. I mean, I don't know. I have to look back at the list, but that would be examples.
Hi Christine, just, uh, I wanted to go back to, actually this fills off of INRS and that process. Cause you had mentioned when you were kind of explaining the process, just a hypothetical example of a sixth, I think a sixth grade student who are functioning at a second grade or third grade level in the classroom. That that would sort of be a student that would be receiving that tier two level of support. And I know you kind of just threw that out there, but it struck me because in my mind, I'm thinking a student who is functioning more than two or so grade levels below grade level. I'm wondering why the trigger hasn't been already implemented for a referral to, um, CST. So I just, I want to be clear, cause you know, I don't know if anyone else sort of thought that as a.
I mean, I just made that recommendation because that happened when I was a STEM supervisor here. That happened because a student moved into the school in sixth grade, moved into us in sixth grade. And we're like, well, what's, you know, we're trying to unpack like, what is the student struggling? And then, um, what we do is we, uh, through the programming that we use for our intervention, there's a specific diagnostic that then, so our, the, the benchmark assessments we use are grade level benchmark assessments. The assessments we use for intervention then die, go deeper to then for standards, like where, where are they operating? Like what actually, like what grade level? And so that was just an example of something, yeah, of a student, but they would, at that point they had already be flagged.
I think that's important to be clear. And I think what the program evaluation will show will hopefully look at sort of, I think across the board, right?
Yes, absolutely.
How far are students sort of falling behind before that process?
Absolutely.
Cause I know that, you know, parents would not want to see their child get more than, you know, two grades level behind because then you need more than just strategies and.
Absolutely. Yep. Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate the, the kind of three-phase plan, a three-year plan. I think that's a really nice idea. I also think we know from research around professional element that three years is a pretty good sweet spot. Sometimes you can get it within two, but even, you know, we're talking about one-stop things not having an effect. Even a year of professional element has very limited effect. You will get some impact, but not a change in culture. So I think, you know, the more we can think about whatever the professional element is, like having a kind of three-year kind of plan for it and how that's kind of going to be built out, I, I would just encourage that as much as we can.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, quickly, I really do think this is really potentially an important development. And, um, two quick things, I know your process is very thorough and it's, it's characteristically, so just two humble suggestions. One is to, um, you know, there's an opportunity here to include education about trauma in the broader school. I think, you know, if kids who have, struggle with these issues, have a sense that their peers understand where their struggles are coming from, that can, you know, potentially be important. So however, whatever form that takes. And, um, I think comment is it really was a good meeting with, with Dr. Ann Gregor when she was there. And one of the things that struck out to me was the need, you know, for, to identify champions in each school. And so, you know, to find the right people, to be the charismatic leaders. And because, you know, broad-based professional development is, is great, but you need people who are in, who are, this is their horse, they're going to ride. So find those people.
That concludes my presentation. Oh, okay. And I will, right? So now, so now, next though, I'll, I'll let Denise do it if she wants to introduce our, the auditor.
Our auditor's presentation, Jonathan Weiss here from auditing company to review our 2324 Agpra, our annual comprehensive financial report, um, for the board and for the public. So Jonathan, welcome. Thank you for coming.
I want to go to the podium. Say, would you podium or wireless mic, John? Do you have a preference? Okay.
Angelo, real quick, can you?
Good evening, everyone. As always, it's our pleasure to come and talk about the results of the audit for this past year and the results of fiscal opportunity for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. My name's John Weiss and I, I lead the team, um, I lead the team here. We come two weeks, once early in the summer, once later in the summer. And we brought everybody their financial reports tonight. And my goal tonight is to try and boil this book down into a couple of financial highlights and fact charts. And one of the first places I like to start is with revenues. And that's going to be our first, that's going to be our first part of our discussion. Now, from district to district to district, where I've gone this summer, a couple of things have gone on. And Highland Park is no different. Interest on bank accounts is up for everybody in Highland Park's no different. New Jersey preschool expansion aid has also increased for most individuals. And Highland Park also received a bump there. In addition to that, this, some districts have, have started their, um, capital grants. And the district has elected to take a capital grant for a roof projects at the Irving School and the high school. Also we're seeing the federal, uh, the federal ARP and ESAR money begin to sunset. The smaller grants expired in, in September of 2023, while the larger five ARP ESAR grants expired in 2024. And we'll see, we'll see an example of that when we look at the bar graphs in our, in our next slide. From 10,000 feet up, the big outliers between revenue this year and last year are primarily the real estate tax levy. That was up about 4%. And the state aid for the general fund, that's up about 1.5 million. The, uh, increase in state aid was due to an increase in equalization aid that the district received. Oh, sure.
No, sorry. Go ahead. You're done. You're good.
Yep. We're out, we're on, you got it. So the, the district did receive a bump in the, um, in equalization aid. Now, we also saw a bit of a decrease in general fund federal aid. And what happened in the 2223 fiscal year was the district received about a hundred and 25 to $150,000 in FEMA aid. And when you're getting FEMA aid for something that normally means you incurred a significant expense in a prior year for it, which the district did. Moving on to our charts, which is on page two of our, uh, presentation. What I wanted to do was do a pie chart showcasing the revenue, uh, and where the revenue sources are for the district. We look at our large green pie wedge, most of the money is coming in from the, the, uh, local tax for your current expense and debt service. The state kicks in about 8.5 million. Federal sources are 2.5 million and that's going to be going down after, um, after fiscal year 2024. And our miscellaneous revenue represents the smallest piece of our pie wedge. That's our tuition, our tuition income, our interest on bank accounts and things of that nature. I also wanted to have a look at the, at the tax levy, particularly as it relates to Highland Park and the municipality and the county. And the, um, and the thing that jumped out at me right away was the revaluation that was done in the municipality back in 2023, bringing all those lines down pretty sharply. If we look at our bar graphs right below, we can see that the tax levy has steadily risen over the last few years. The state sources, as we talked about earlier, had a pretty significant jump between 23 and 24. That's most, that's the result of the equalization aid and the preschool education expansion aid that was, uh, talked about earlier. We talked about the ESAR funds and the ARP ESAR funds that are sunsetting. And we can see in our federal sources, the last three bar, the last three bars of our graph are all pretty high and that represents the spend of those federal funds. When we look at this bar chart, a year from now, we're going to see a pretty big dip because those, those funds have sunsetted. And the yellow bars represent our tuition interest, another. And tuition is going to be a contingent on bodies in the building and folks that we're bringing in from other districts. I believe we also brought in, uh, someone who was state responsibility this past year, which kicked into that. As well as, uh, the interest on bank accounts that, uh, all school districts that I've visited this summer have been enjoying. Any questions, comments, concerns on revenue before we take a moment on expenses? Okay. Moving on to our financial facts on expenditures. The thing that jumped out at me while I was, while I was getting ready for tonight was, um, the, there was a, a bump in instruction expenses, a bump in student and instruction related services expenses and plan operations, maintenance expenses and employee benefits for operating expenses. The stuff we can expect to pay year in and year out. And what this is, is a lot of the, um, a lot of the bumps in things like state aid making their way into the appropriation lines. In particular, in the student and instruction related services line, we had, uh, we brought in another counselor. There were additional what are called extraordinary services, one-on-one aides, one-on-one nurses, one-on-one, um, assistance with pupil transportation, things of that nature. That can get kind of pricey. The bump in plan operations and maintenance is the result of our modular classrooms and setting them up this past year. And the bump in employee benefits, that's primarily going to be your health benefits bump. And we, we do see that from district to district. The capital outlay expenses below represents things that, um, that can be significant in nature, but are not things that are going to happen year in and year out. And the big capital outlay expenses this past year were going to be a, a chiller project, a roof project, and there was also some whiteboard replacements during the past fiscal year, making up the 903, 300 in a capital outlay. What I wanted to do on the next page of our handout is look at a couple of pie charts. And when I go to a district, I expect to see the pie chart on top mostly filled out with green, blue and purple wedges to the tune of about 75% of our pie. And I'm not disappointed in coming to Highland Park. If we look at our green wedges, that represents our regular and special education instruction. Our tuition represents the darker blue wedge. That's about 3.5 million for the students sent out of district. Student and instruction related services, we, we hit on that a bit earlier as far as the bump in, uh, bump in there. That's going to be our guidance counselors, our nurses, our child study team, our librarians. Our administrative is our superintendent and principal's office. Plan operations and maintenance and pupil transportation are self-explanatory and employee benefits are purple wedge. So now that we know the departments where the expenses are being, uh, spent, I wanted to have a look at right below that at, okay, what are we actually buying? And from district to district, the purple wedge and the dark blue wedge are pretty consistent to the tune of about two thirds to three quarters of our pie. And that's going to be salaries and benefits, the teachers and staff. The engine that makes the car hum. A bit, a bit on utilities and tuition, uh, cleaning repairs and maintenance as needed is a bit. Supplies, about 2% purchase services. That represents the folks that we bring in like your auditors, your attorneys, your professionals for child study team, your occupational, physical therapists and a bit for transportation costs. What I also wanted to do on the next page of our handout was look at how things stack up over 10 years. Our regular and special education lines, our green lines are relatively consistent, a bit, a bit of a bump in a regular instruction and special ed. Our tu, our tuition relatively stable. We had a, we were hired around 2020, went down and went up again in 2024. Student and instruction related services, that's trending up, but we've explained that one. Our administrative services are ticking up a bit. Plan operations and maintenance, the spike in 2024, those are, that represents our modular classrooms that were set up. Pupil transportation is going to be contingent on bodies on the buses. The district has a coordinated transportation arrangement with the regional cooperative. And depending on how many kids are on the bus going to the specific place where the children are going, that's going to be, those, those percentage of costs are going to be what's allocated to the district. Our employee benefits that we hit on earlier, that's mostly going to be health benefits. And that's ticked up as well over the last year. Any questions, comments, concerns on expenses before we take a few minutes and talk about fund balance? Moving on to fund balance, the last page of our financial facts. We can see that fund balance went down about $401,000 between this year and last year. Increases in reserves were offset by decreases in things like encumbrances. If we look at our encumbrances, we went from 433, 600 to 107, 152. That represents open purchase orders at the end of the year where we ordered the goods, but they didn't arrive on or before June 30th, 2023. And when that happens, that goes into a separate bucket into our fund balance or surplus. So that when it's brought in the next fiscal year, we don't use current year money for something that we really wanted to buy in the prior year. The other big dip was in the designated for subsequent years expenditures. And what that does is earmark a portion of surplus as a budget revenue to offset increases in appropriations. And is done, and is done during the budget cycle. The bigger increase in our restricted reserves are going to be in the capital reserve. That went up about 600,000. Our budgeted maintenance and emergency reserve went down to about, to the tune of about $200,000 for the emergency reserve. And about 120,000 in the maintenance reserve for those eligible projects that we can use to fund from those reserves. Moving on to our pie chart on the next page. As the month, as the pie goes from green to blue, the money gets less restricted. If we look at our large green wedge, 3.6 million. That's for a cat, that's in your capital reserve account. Those are for, those are for projects that are specifically designated in your long-range facility plan. So the, if we want to use those funds for a particular plan, it's got to be in the long-range facility plan. And this will enable you to possibly self-fund a small construction project or at the very least have to go to the taxpayers for, for a bit less, should you, should you have to go to referendum for it. Restricted emergency funds are just that, they're for emergency purposes. Also for, um, health benefit costs that, that exceed budgeted estimates. Our maintenance reserve, 338, 925, that represents the amount in our comprehensive maintenance plan for eligible projects. Think capital reserve, but on a much smaller scale and mostly for repairs. The district is self-insured for unemployment, should those claims come in. Our committed fund balance represents our open encumbrances at the end of the year. Our assigned fund balance, as we spoke of earlier, that's fund balance that's earmarked for, for the budget to offset primarily big tax increases. And our unassigned free balance is the last thing, and that's one, that's the 1.3 million. That's our quote unquote free surplus. Because in the state of New Jersey, you can't have too much money. And we're limited to what we can have in our unassigned surplus to 2% of operating, 2% of expenditures and state aid that's not budgeted. Looking down at our bar graphs below, our encumbrances as, our conferences, as we talked about earlier, were down a bit from last year. At 2023, we had a lot of the stuff for the modular classrooms ready to go as far as, um, ordered so that we can get them, so that the district could get them up and running. so that we can get them, so that the district could get them up and running in time for the school year. Our assigned fund balance represents the amount committed to the subsequent year's budget. Our unrestricted surplus, if we can see, 21 and 22, we had bigger years in our bars. That represents the state allowing us to go from 2% to 4% of operating expenditures in those years. Once we got to fiscal year 2023, went back down to 2%, and these bars show that. What we also wanted to do was look at our cap maintenance and emergency reserves in the last page of our handout. And look and see how that's going. The district's done a great job in banking capital reserve money for their capital needs over the last few years. Maintenance reserve has also ticked up, we used a bit of it up in this past fiscal year. And emergency reserve is ticking down. As we can see by the charts to our right, actual versus maximum, we're still we're still well under what the state says, because this is another instance where you can't have too much money, and you're limited to what you can have in these reserves in the districts, and in a healthy spot as far as that goes. Any questions, comments, concerns on surplus? Yes?
Is it sort of, you know, it looks like we have about a third the maximum available in the capital. It'd be quite a bit less as a proportion for maintenance reserve and emergency reserve, is that pretty normal?
Pretty normal, depends on, it depends on from district to district what the needs are.
But are there districts that are like, have, they max out, is that unusual, I guess, for that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Are there districts that sort of max out, or is that pretty unusual to have?
It's unusual to have a district max out.
Just one, I just wanted to know.
Any other questions, comments, concerns on surplus? Okay, another word or two about the audit. As I mentioned earlier, we come and visit the district twice a year. And we look at everything from financial statements to vouchers, to payroll books, to cafeteria records, to even student enrollment and transportation reports. Results of the audit this year, we had one recommendation, just to monitor point-of-sale balances in your cafeteria account. Other than that, the district cleaned up very well on the other recommendations from the prior year. And with that, I'll be happy to take any more questions, comments, concerns from the board.
Thank you, I just want to say that's a positive ending, we cleaned up very well.
I just want to echo Monique's second, and thank you, John, and thank you for all your hard work and collaboration. I know over the years we've had some ups and downs, but I appreciate your close working with Denise and her group. But, and congratulations Denise, because that was a huge accomplishment, I just want to celebrate Denise and her staff, thank you.
I just want to thank John and his staff for coming and being very patient with all of us. And also, I wanted to give a huge shout out to the business office staff. Lori, Jalisa, Susan Shaughnessy, and Adriana, there's been a huge shift in the business office. And I appreciate everyone's patience and kindness. But we're driving the bus forward and everybody's on the bus, so that's a good thing, thank you so much.
So my contact information is available for anybody should there be any other questions, comments, concerns after the meeting. Feel free to reach out to me anytime. And with that, have a great night, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board Policy Number 0167 establishes and regulates the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Angelo, how many people do we have online? Okay, if you are online and you'd like to make a public Oh, does anybody here in person that wants to make public comment? Yes, okay, please come to the podium.
That's right.
For those of you who know me, my name is John Turner, and I work at the after-school program at Bartle School. And one of the reasons that I've come here tonight is because I have a very, very serious concern that is currently affecting our country. As you all know, the incoming effects of this new administration has been nothing short of abhorrent. Not only have they begun targeting people for deportation, they've also removed protection statuses from schools. And as somebody who works with these kids, including many who are immigrants, I absolutely oppose this. And I want to make sure that all of us do everything that we can to protect all these kids. As a longtime resident of Highland Park, and as somebody who's made friends with immigrants, the last thing that I ever want to see is anybody taken away from this hometown, especially people who I'm friends with, and especially kids who I'm working with. I already swore to myself that I will do my best to protect them. I'm only hoping that you guys are ready to do your part too, because we really, really need to stand up to this monster. He must be stopped. I refrain from mentioning him by name, of course, because I don't wish to offend anybody. But if anybody is seriously concerned about their student, fear not. I want to make sure that everybody here knows that they're not going to take you away from here. I hope you guys are ready to do the same thing, too. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. We will be talking more about what we're going to be doing later on. All right, and nobody else is in person, nobody's, sorry. I had missed you, Mr. Turner, you were sitting behind Dan, so I didn't see you, my apologies. No problem. All right, if anybody online has a public comment, please raise your hand. Let me give it 10 more seconds. Don't want to miss anyone. Okay, and with no hands raised, we're going to close public comments and move on to our committee reports. We will start with curriculum and instruction.
All right, so we have a lot to report out from curriculum instruction, we met on January 16th. First off, we reviewed a number of revisions to the health curriculum. These were revised to include integration of LGBTQ-related content and expansion of the personal and mental health topics. They also included resources on LGBTQ-plus topics such as garden state equity and Glisten. So those are actually up for a vote tonight. We also reviewed a lot of policies and got some emails too, so I'm going to try to clarify a couple of things as I move through this. We have a policy around eligibility of resident, non-resident students. We wanted to make sure as some policy recommendations were coming down, that staff had the same access as they already do to bring their children into the district. So we were very careful about reviewing that policy with that in mind. We're examining the high school graduation policy because there is a new requirement for students to complete the FAFSA. However, our previous policy had been revised significantly from what was recommended prior. So we are looking at the recommendations that are coming down and comparing them to what we had in the policy already, and have to really look between those two before anything kind of moves forward. We also looked at our HIB policy, a number of policies need to be updated due to the new state MOA, and that was true for a lot of the policies we looked at. There is a new MOA with law enforcement. And so this impacts HIB, smoking, and electronic surveillance. Some of these changes are really minor in language. But they've also raised some other issues that I'll talk about in just a moment. But that new MOA impacts a number of policies, but at times it's with a change as simple as including other drugs, like that simple. We looked at the student smoking policy, which was impacted by the MOA. We're clarifying who are the contacts in the policy and an issue around fines that wasn't clear. If that was actually from courts, or if that was actually district fines. We had some concerns about the district fining, but it wasn't really clear, so we're checking some language around that. We are reviewing the recommendations for changes to the academic integrity policy. I think before the policy was really focused on plagiarism. This one is a little more broad, in some cases, I think we thought were helpful, and others it might be too broad in how it was capturing academic integrity, so we're still examining that. I'll also note that we are looking at AI policy, and so these two will likely overlap. And so we're going to, I think, really consider those side by side as we move forward around it. There were some recommended changes around student grievance policy. And we think these actually really clarify the process and the timeline for grievances, and hopefully that clarifies things for parents and what that process looks like. And so I think we see mostly those as improvements. We looked at electronic surveillance, again, that was one impacted by MOA with very minor changes. We also are looking at, we are required to have a spectator code of conduct for interscholastic events policy. I do not believe we've had one before, and so we are looking at this, but also trying to communicate with other districts to see how they are conceptualizing this. I think in particular, some of the consequences are not clear, and so we are looking at that, but haven't made any decisions on it. The, I believe the last policy we actually talked about was around cooperation with law enforcement agencies. And this is a mandated policy, and we did hear from some community members about this. The recommended change is very minor. I think the concern is, given the current administration, that it includes warrant as well as other reasons, really kind of general. And given, you know, threats of deportation, threats to immigrants, warrant can be interpreted as administrative warrant, it can be interpreted as court-ordered, and other reasons are very open to be interpreted. And so we just want, we are tabling this, but we want to make really, we want to be very careful in that language to make sure that are both, I think, for the staff and the district, but also to outside law enforcement agencies, what the district policy is around that, and what we will recognize as a warrant, which I believe we want to recognize court, you know, ordered warrants, not office warrants and so forth. And so we are in contact with some experts in reviewing that language, and also reviewing how much we can actually shift in that language before we put anything forward. I missed something. There is also a clarification on one of the policies. I believe it might have been eligibility of resident, non-resident students, is that right? Around, there was edit from parent and guardian to parent. So we actually looked at our bylaws, and parent actually is defined in our bylaws as natural parents, adoptive parents, legal guardians, foster parents, or parent surrogate of a student. And so it actually says where parents are separated or divorced. Parent means the person or agency who has legal custody of the student, as well as the natural or adoptive parents of the student, provided such parental rights have not been terminated by a court or appropriate jurisdiction. So this is actually the definition in our bylaws that applies to all of our policies. And so even though it says parent in there in that policy, it is inclusive of a much broader definition. And so I think that's an important clarification in that policy. Even as some of the language is shifted, it actually is referencing the bylaw definition that is much broader. And I think there's one more thing. We also looked at a number of field trips, there were nine new field trips, including a robotics tournament, a trip to explore Asian culture in New York, and the eighth grade celebration. So those were also up for consideration, and we still had more policies we were not able to review, but we'll be looking at those moving forward. So, we're voting. I just, in good light. So we are voting on approval of field trips, and I just mentioned approval of HIB reports, approval of Special Education Corrective Action Plan, or for approval of new revised Schedule B positions, particularly for tech crew and the Bartle Green Team. Approval of university graduate students for internships, these are all in the SCL lab at Bartle. Approval of MSW intern for the Community Team Center. Approval of the school district calendar, approval of home instruction for two students. Approval of Holocaust Remembrance Day Assembly for high school, and there's some changes to that. Approval of EDFI pilot program, we have been participating in this already, and is approval to extend that. We're very, I think, happy with that program and feel like we've benefited from it. And this is really, I think, an extension of that, which we are looking forward to. And number 11 is the approval of revised health curriculum that I mentioned earlier. And that is my report, any questions?
There's a comment that I actually read. The special ed corrective action plan was really a very small, a small piece. But I think what I heard from Dr. Suska is that overall, when they came in, it was, everything was very positive. And so corrective action plan sounds like a concern, but actually it was very specific to speech, and how progress is being noted or something, but it's a pretty small piece, given the size of their review, that's what to say.
Yeah, thanks for that, man.
Fabios? All right, Equity and Excellence.
Okay, well, Equity and Excellence met on the 16th of January, and we started off discussing pretty much all the same policies, just reviews. So as you were going through, I said, let me go to my notes and see what I can add to what you said that we may have discussed in a little bit more detail, or from a different, more equity-focused lens. So thinking about the eligibility of resident, non-resident students policy 511, I would just add to that, that our committee, one of the suggestions that came out of that discussion, we will, of course, allow students to enroll in the district during the school year if they haven't yet moved into the district, as long as they can show proof of residency. A known curriculum instruction, there was a suggestion for an eight-week window of time. We discussed the possibility of considering adding language to allow case-by-case extension in circumstances where pending residency proof is still valid, but maybe there was a difference, a change in the move date, whether it was the house closing or what have you, we know things can happen. So we talked about just possibly adding that kind of language to allow that flexibility there for unintended delays. Let's see, under the high school graduation policy, the update to include a requirement to complete the FAFSA. Doctor, we just had a concern about just the additional burden or responsibility that's going to place on students and families who may not have enough resources or support to really get through that process in a timely manner. And so Dr. Suska talked about discussing with Elizabeth Assamoah, discussing this concern and determining how guidance counselors can enhance their support in assisting families with meeting this new requirement. Let's see, then the seal of bi-literacy, we talked about, well, no policy change there, just some minor language tweaks. And then, let's move on down here, you already talked about that. Students, this is interesting. Student smoking policy 5533. We did just, I just want to add that we talked about, because now we know that students who, we have to report instances where there is a seizure of an electronic smoking device and it has to be reported to law enforcement if there's reason to believe that it contains cannabis or a controlled substance. And Dr. Suska, just we all discussed kind of reiterating the district's approach to in-house. Response to that for the students is going to be therapeutic. And of course, we have to follow the law in terms of reporting it to law enforcement. As a follow-up, Dr. Suska is going to look into a question that came up about instances when this HPPD may involve municipal court. We don't want to do that, involve municipal court in instances where this particular situation can happen where cannabis or a controlled substance is found in an electronic smoking device. But again, when it's out of our hands, I think the question just came up, well, what is the likelihood, let's say, of HPPD involving municipal court in those cases? So I know that's something Dr. Suska is following up on. Then in terms of the student grievance policy, one thing we did, I just want to highlight that CNI suggested curriculum and instructions. It suggests allowing 10 days to file a grievance rather than the five-day, current five-day. So that was a specific timeline there. Okay, all right. So I think that's it for policies because you pretty much said everything we said. And we discussed. I love that. I just love when the committees work together so well. Okay, so now moving into discipline, which really is the last item, I think, that we have to talk about here from Equity and Excellence. We looked at the discipline data for December at Bartle. Some of the highlights there. Overall, a low total number of incidents at five. There were increase in number of students involved in these incidents. But again, that tends to be the nature of some incidents. And so 10 students involved, total of five incidents. One of those incidents resulted in an in-school suspension. We, in the middle school, the total incidents remains higher or remained higher than the other schools at 81. The total number of students involved in these incidents, also 40. So again, seeing some of that sort of repeat of a group of students maybe involved in multiple incidents or multiple students involved in one incident. Sorry about that. So the results in terms of in-school and out-of-school suspensions were four in-school and four out-of-school, which we could look at positively, given the total number of incidents that at least we were not suspending and removing kids from their learning environment at a high rate. But again, we recognize the need for more continued support. And we definitely had discussion about ways that district is going to really be providing more comprehensive support. The high school, total incidents were 66, total number of students involved were 40. One ISS in-school suspension and two out-of-school suspensions. And then we really just got into a lengthy discussion, fairly lengthy discussion, on Dr. Suska's plan for this comprehensive three-year trauma-informed care program and how that would be really an umbrella program that would incorporate a focus on restorative practices and really ensuring that we are doing those practices in a way that's comprehensive. As we all talked about previously in prior discussions, when we talked about the review of the RISE program and Dr. Ann Gregory's suggestion. So it's just nice to see everything sort of coming together. We talked about defining kind of a role of a person who would be doing restorative practice work. What would that look like? Depending again on what sort of resources we have to put towards that. The tiered response approach, of course, community engagement, coaching requirements, et cetera, as Dr. Suska went into. So there's not a whole lot of need to add there as well, I mean, at this point. And again, just happy to hear also that there's grant funding for this. I know that this is something that we will have to keep our fingers crossed that we get what we need to really implement this three-year plan. But we're looking forward to hearing your full plan when that is developed. And then, let's see, that's not the last topic, I'm sorry, I was premature there. We talked about the gifts and grants and donations policy that's under review. And the discussion there, I know CNI also talked about that. But just thinking about decisions around how to handle donations. And Dr. Suska really just emphasizes some of those discussions can happen at the local level, right? Where the building administrator is really determining whether this is, whether a particular donation is either large enough or involving perhaps applications that one or two classroom teachers may want to use. Just thinking about the implications of these donations and whether or not the decisions around how to share and handle those donations should be kind of bumped up to Christina's, Dr. Suska's level. So we had that discussion. I think that's something that Dr. Suska emphasized that she has a pretty good handle on. We also talked about working with the principals just to collect data on some of the different apps that are being used to communicate with families and streamlining those tools a bit. So we're seeing that there's a, Dr. Suska at least, is seeing if there's a need for more streamlining of those tools. And I think that's it. Let me just check. Yes, and then just, I want to emphasize on the electronic communication devices policy, the language around limited use of cell phones and personal electronic devices during the school day. Of course, this is an ongoing conversation and we are going to be getting data from the community, some feedback on how their feelings on that. But we did talk about just emphasizing that there will be, of course, in any policy changes, there will always be an exemption for students who, in their IEP or 504 plan, have that kind of accommodation. We also talked about the, that there will be no recording of student or staff without parent guardians of staff. Look at that, I did it. Parent. Parent member or staff members approval. Okay, so that's really all I had to add to that. And that is all for Equity and Excellence. Any questions?
I'm just curious, we had a lot of vigorous discussions when I was in Equity and Excellence about the RISE, the RISE program. And I'm wondering, you know, people are still on, but Monique in particular, I know you care a lot about that program. What do you think about this new focus on trauma-informed care and the hypothesis that maybe it explains some of the reasons for seeing those repeat people coming through?
Well, first I will say, I think it's an amazing, it sounds like an amazing opportunity for us to pull together strands of work that has already been happening in the district. So I don't want to suggest here that we have never looked at trauma-informed care here. So I think that's one point I want to make, that we have been, had many conversations in the past about the trauma that our students are experiencing. We've been having those conversations and really have tried to focus on when we're talking about culture and climate, we're talking about SEL, we're talking about understanding our adverse trauma that student, our adverse childhood experiences and trauma that many of our students are experiencing. But what Dr. Suska has really brought forth is, okay, this large umbrella, that's our umbrella, right? Trauma-informed, and what are all the pieces that we need to include all there? And all of those pieces, we really had already in place, but just not in that centralized, really cohesive manner. So I'm excited about, you know, what we can do now that we have that and with that three-year model. So, you know, and I do think, listening to what Dr. Suska has presented, I also was thinking about just really being clear about that RISE program being very narrow kind of in its focus, right? It was really an alternative to in-school suspension. So this idea that it was going to address all of the needs of the students who find themselves there was just not based in sort of reality around what a program like that could do. So I think that's something that is hopefully coming out of these conversations that we're having and certainly with the feedback that we got from Dr. and Gregory. And then lastly, I would say, and I know I'm probably answering more than what you asked, but you know, I have the microphone. That Dr. Gregory, I just want to emphasize that she talked about when our RISE program and how she really questioned, yes, we have a framework there, we have the pieces of the therapeutic SEL supports, but looking at restorative practices and how comprehensive restorative practices, practice program should be in order to have the kind of impact that we want. That's what we're going to be doing now, like adding that comprehensive piece that we didn't have. And I really want to highlight that because to me that was kind of the biggest sort of flashlight that Ann Gregory gave us. Like, wait a minute, I don't even know if we can say this is a restorative practices program when you do not have all of these comprehensive components. So that in a nutshell, I hope answers your question and gives you a little bit more balance on my mind about it. No, seriously, I hope that answers your question.
I mean, it's a long conversation, but I was just curious what your thoughts were.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to finance and facilities.
Okay, is this working?
You can pull it more now.
All right, our committee met also on the 14th. And Jen, we're there along with myself and Dr. Suska and Ms. DeRosa and Colin McIntosh and John Flanagan. I'll summarize some of the things that we talked about. Before and after care program is always on our agenda. And we have on our, it's always on the agenda of our committee meetings, but it's also on our agenda tonight to approve Colin and Denise as authorized user for a subsidy payment application. So they are well into the process of having families sign up for subsidies. And there is a an act, they need access to a website to where the funds, let me have, it's the Epic Portal that they need access to. So we needed, our resolution just aligns with our past practice of, you know, whenever there's access to funds, that it gets approved through the board. So that's, that's one of the items here. Our audit is on the agenda and we discussed it as well. And they were with the corrective action plan on there, which again is very small and it's related to the issue of collecting monies for lunch. That is an ongoing challenge of all districts and we don't have a lot of options to do that, but we do have to keep our eye on it. And Denise does that very well. Knows every time which money is owed out. And doing lots of robot, now we're doing robot calls to try to remind parents that they owe money. So trying every which way to collect money while continuing to provide our children their lunches. And some other things I'll go over on the, I'll do that on the agenda, so I don't have to do it twice. We have just, we had just one policy, much easier than the rest of you. And it was a food service policy, pretty lengthy, very subscribed by the federal government, defining all the other, all different aspects of a breakfast and a lunch program in a school district. So we can't literally change anything in here, nor would we want to. I think we even had the same conversation, Jen might remember about caregiver, wanting to change the wording on it. And we were, Denise did some research, we can't change the wording on this policy. It is coming from the federal government. And obviously, as Dan said, our bylaws cover everybody anyway, and we have to leave it as it is. But other than that, it's, it's pretty much what they gave us. We need to approve. What else that we talked about? Oh, I don't know how, why I had this, oh, I know, because I have separated by action items. The other, going back to before and after care, we did have a conversation about how we handle families who do not qualify for subsidy under the terms of the county program. However, they are on free and reduced lunch. So we had a conversation about, you know, how we kind of bridge that gap in the short term and in the long term. And our suggestion was not to impact families significantly, particularly at this time, mid-year, to kind of keep some of our policies in place so that those families can continue to receive subsidies, continue to receive a lower rate. Because there's just different, the county looks at different issues than necessarily just income. And that's what Colin's trying to resolve. But we did encourage him to begin to create a a policy or a protocol to look at this. We're looking, he's looking at it case by case, but we need something to refer to. What do we, what's the consideration and how we're doing this? So obviously, this is all new to us and they're working on it. John gave us an update on projects. Bartle Walkway, still, still they're working on actually the whole scope of the project. That's still not been defined, but definitely people are coming in and working on it. Bartle bathroom work is scheduled from, to start end of April through August. They're working on the different kinds of tiles, siding tiles and fixtures. And the area has to be tested for asbestos, which may have already been done, but hadn't at that point. Baseball field renovations was a, was a conversation scheduled to start in the spring. But of course, if some people would prefer, some people would like us to use the field for the spring and then do it later. So he's getting some, you know, strong encouraging on that end. The problem is, it's already two years in the making and the original estimates are now two years old. The longer we delay the project, the less we're going to get done with the money or prices are obviously are going up. So John's trying to figure that out. We want to get as much as we can for the money that we have. This is all coming from the Ida Kushner Fund. And the same thing with the greenhouse, he's still working on getting bids for the greenhouse and concrete slab and electrical and plumbing work, so it's all coming along. He's gathering information at this point, no decisions are made. The policy that we had a conversation about, and I think it's going to come back to the rest of you guys on the committees, is a policy for public and executive sessions of our board. Because we have remote participation, the question is, we don't have a policy that allows board members actually to participate remotely. It's not actually on our books. So Denise had gone out to School Boards Association, or we have, we have a draft from them, which I believe was attached to our minutes. And I think we might go back through committees to talk about the working, the worrying of a policy so that we have something in writing for how we operate. And we ended our meeting with a riveting presentation by Denise to review all the aspects of our, of our budget. Seriously, it was very helpful. How the budget is created, the meaning of all the codes, which is always very interesting, hard to remember, but important, and revenue and expenditures. So help for the finance committee to get a good review of that. And our agenda items. So number one is interesting, it was asked for clarification. Change six Nickelodeon actually was a grant that Ms. Baldezone applied for, for indoor recess activity equipment for Bartle. So we got, I think it's $500. So that's, that's very nice. Number two is organizations that our staff might have access to in terms of investing and insurance. Three, we're adding two more tax-sheltered vendors, again, for our staff, and I believe was at their request. We have our audit report on here, the corrective action plan that we talked about, treasurer's reports, and the treasurer reports go back, there's some corrections for July through September. And I think that's to line up with our audits. So there's a number, there is, if you looked online, there are lots of pages for those two reports. But it was going back, I think, just to clean things up from from the, now to match the audit exactly. Supplemental bill lists, and then our actual bill list. The bill list through January 27th. Treasurer's reports, ward secretary reports, budget transfers, travel expenses. We've got a lengthy list of professional development contract, well, the contract, there's a list, a shortlist for contractors coming in to work with our, our staff. And other, other contractors, professional services and related services for this year. Some of the things for our musical. Summer programs, yoga for eighth grade. Feature language services. We have one student who is going out of district that is on our agenda. Three students for bedside instruction. One non-resident student, so coming to us, paying tuition to be in Highland Park. So we're voting to accept that tuition. We have some pass-through funds for Children's House Montessori on technology. And for Yeshiva on a security guard, also those are pass-through funds that we are required to vote on. The donation for our wrestling team of $1,000. I guess another, the long-term substitutes, that's another company that we can get substitutes from. Is that what that is, Global LLC? To help out at the before and after care. There, oh, this is the, number 24 is that Epic state subsidy payment system that we need to have access to, Denise and Colin need to have access to. Some substitutes for before and after care. And the last one, number 26, is a legal settlement that is on our agenda. And that's it for finance facilities.
Any questions? Any questions for finance and facilities?
I have a question. Denise, have there been any updates on the baseball field? Always my question.
Yeah, John and I did speak to the district architect who submitted the plans, the DOE. We have the permit from the soil conservation and we also have the construction permit, so we are able to start. Unfortunately, the ground is frozen. So John and I did reach out to the Athletic Booster So John and I did reach out to the athletic boosters who donated the fund to us just to discuss if they would like to postpone renovating the field or if they would like to move forward so that we can make contingency plans for the season if need be. So I'm waiting to hear back from them. So we're, we're status quo right now.
Okay, so we don't know if it will be more expensive or it will be more expensive to push it back.
Right, so John and I would like to have a discussion with the athletic boosters. It's really their funds. The district does not have any funds to contribute towards the project. So it's really, it comes down to the, to the money and to when the vendor can provide the services. You know, I think the vendor alluded to John that he may have to charge more, but I'm not sure that that is the case. Okay.
I will say just kind of to add on to the baseball thing, I do have some personal interest as I am a member of the team. But it also had spoken with players. And I know the major concern is if it's not going to be ready by the season, pushing it back. Because I know typically the contingency plan is Donaldson. And we did have to play a part of the 2022 season there. And it does, the field is a significant downgrade and there is a lot of resources lost and a competitive disadvantage there. So I know that the sentiment of a lot of the players and the entire team is moving it back so we don't lose this home field.
I can convey that to the boosters and we can work together to find a solution.
I have a question. Uh-oh, no, small one. These two items, 20 and 21, just the boombox radio from Children's House. And then, you know, $21,000 for a security guard for the Yeshiva. Under what sort of program is, I mean, is this, because they're not public schools, I don't think, or?
These are non-public allocations from the state. So the state distributes allocations for security, textbooks, nursing, technology through the public school districts to be distributed to the non-public schools in the community. And they, there's a set of circumstances that they have to meet. It's done through the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. So the non-publics will work with ESDNJ to procure the items that are authorized by the state to procure. One of them happens to be security guard.
Security guard, okay, good, thank you.
Christina, I did just have one more question about, it came up a few times with the policies. Would we be able to put a link on there to the definition of parent that Dan had described before? Just so if, if, if parents were looking at the policy or staff members, students, if anyone was looking, we'd have an easy way to get to.
I can certainly inquire with my secretary and find out. So it, because it goes on and goes up through Strauss. So Strauss, if you've gone onto our policies, because I know everyone loves to look there. If you go to Highland Park and under Board, Board Policies.
I actually do, so.
Okay, thank you. You can see that it's a subset of Strauss. So I'm not sure if, when we uploaded, if Strauss allows embedded links or not. So I would have to look there, but our bylaws does contain it and the bylaws are up there, so.
When we've done the link, has that been on our like regulations then? We've added links before to, you know.
I, I don't, I don't know if we have, I don't, I haven't, I don't think we have.
We've done links to like other, when it references another policy and.
Yeah, so we'll, so we could put the whole, so what you do is you put the whole URL in there. So it's not a hyperlink, so it's a whole URL, URL. So we could put the whole URL to our bylaws.
Yeah, okay.
But that would have to be on every policy that we do. So that it's just, it's just quite a, I mean, you could do it for every new policy that comes up. But we have, I mean, you have zero to 9,000 policy, like in terms of the codes, right? You have your 1,000 policy, your 2,000 policy, your 3,000. So it's, I mean, it's a lot to do for every single one. So my recommendation is just to leave it as is. Spread the word, it's in our bylaws, go to the bylaws. And it's, and I think if you notice that too, some of the language that Strauss has put out too, I think there was one recently about including, I think it was about maybe Title IX and/or harassment or something. It's like who cover, it was like a protected classes. If you remember that policy where it was like protected classes, it's like anything under the code. Instead of updating every time there's a new protected class, it's like everything under the code. And there, and then you can go to, if you Google a code, the code will give you everything. So I think that's really the avenue that they're moving on. It's like, here it is, there's a spot for it somewhere in the universe so that every time you don't have to update, updated everything that it comes out. So that would be another example, I think, the direction that they're moving in for that.
That makes sense.
Spread the word.
Thank you. Will do.
All right, for personnel, personnel met earlier, we now meet an executive. So we have approval, number one, two leaves of absences. Number two is approval for resignations. Ms. Begonia stepping down as the academic enrichment for middle school. Ms. Strasher, we will miss you. She is resigning from LDTC. Ms. Simmer, congratulations on your retirement. Oh, yes, the, the read-in for Ms. Strasher is that she is actually resigning as of February 14th, 2025, not February 20th. Ms. Celeste Sestilio from the ESL Middle School position and Ms. Lewis, also for reasons of retirement. We have approval of some appointments. So Mr. Lubyanko for academic enrichment for middle school. There's a lot here, so I'm not going to read all of them. Highlights, we are getting another teen counselor, yay. Who's going to be helping out at Irving, thank you so much. We have a teacher of social studies, Mr. Kaiser will be joining the middle school, welcome. Thank you to Ms. Landis for chaperoning the high school swim competition. Ms. Novelli for pre-K, after-school site manager, some teachers who are volunteering as high school mentors. We have Ms. Hodge volunteering for pit musician, Mr. Berenger, Ms. Roca for babysitting, thank you. And Ms. News for translating for our strategic planning meetings. Or what is it, the focus groups? We have some transfers as listed, Ms. Alara, Ms. Dietlin, Ms. Clermont and Ms. Bisholi. And then we have a lot of staff being approved for professional development. You can see all of the wonderful professional development sessions that they are preparing for as listed under number five. I mean, there's just so much math, ELA, SEL, art, I mean, just AI. List goes on and on. And then we also have on number six, approval of professional development presenters for the PD Academy. That's the PDs that teachers and staff can go to after school. So thank you so much to teachers who are preparing PDs for the PD Academy. And then we have approval of a date change for staff for the bilingual parent advisory committee puzzle night, funded through Title III. And then we have approval of three staff members who are going to be supporting students through independent study. And that is it for personnel. Any questions?
Just a comment. Just a comment about, to thank all these teachers for doing all this professional development for us. It's, it's an amazing list, so it's very impressive.
All right, and then for policy on the agenda, we have policies for first read as listed. And we are tabling policy 9320. So you'll see G. And then I, the regulation 9320, those we are not moving forward with this evening. We have two policies and regulations for second reading, 0131 and 0155. All right, and that concludes our committee reports. And now we move to our second public comments. Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Is there anybody in person that would like to public comment? All right, Angela, how many do we have online? Is there anybody online who would like to public comment? Please raise your hand. Now with no hands raised, we're going to close public comment. And we're now going to move to board action items, curriculum instruction, take it away.
Move items one through 11.
Second. Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Pruse?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
I'm going to recuse on two and say yes for the rest.
I meant abstain, sorry.
Ms. Staniyo?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Finance facilities?
Move items one to 26.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Pruse?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Staniyo?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Hey, for personnel, I'd like to move numbers one through eight with the exception of, wait a minute. Oh, wait, nope, that's wrong, numbers one through eight.
Dr. Beatty?
I'm going to abstain from number five and yes to everything else.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Nope, yes, sorry, I couldn't unmute.
Ms. Pruse?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes, and I will miss May Lewis.
Ms. Staniyo?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
And for policies and regulations, I'd like to move numbers one and two. Number one, we are not moving one G or one I. I'm sorry, yeah, one G or one I.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Pruse?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Staniyo?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to board liaison reports. Does anyone have a report for this evening?
I have a quick report for the Commission for Universal Access. In the past, they have given some money to Glow, the Glow program. And they will be doing that again, I think they're increasing it. So it'll be 750 for Glow Junior and 750 for Glow Senior, I don't know, it's just Glow. And so I'm sure this will come up in future finances and voting. But it will really be, I think, earmarked to support students in accessing programs that they wouldn't normally be able to afford or access. And so I just wanted to highlight that as something that will be coming from that commission.
Anybody else? All right. But President's Report, I just want to extend a thank you to all of the board members and community members who have been sending resources to help us create a plan to support our students as we navigate this, you know, new regulations regarding immigration status and everything that's going on currently. So I'm going to go ahead and move to old business because in new business, we are going to discuss kind of how we want to move forward. So is there any old business? Great, is there any new business? There is new business. Yes, so we would like to discuss next steps. So Ann and I had started, and Dr. Suska obviously had started, talking about just the impending changes prior to the inauguration, thinking about how we were going to support our students in the climate that, you know, we were expecting. However, we did not expect this climate because we did not expect the schools to be stripped of their sensitive area designation. So we, you know, obviously have been working with Dr. Suska, sharing resources. Community members have been sharing resources. And other board members also have been sharing resources. And Dr. Suska has been working on a plan to address our needs and to make sure that we are following protocols that keep our students safe, that we communicate to the community that our students will be safe in our schools. And so I'm going to hand over the mic to Dr. Suska so she can speak a little bit to that. And then as a board, we can kind of discuss our next steps.
Yeah, thank you. So one of the things I immediately did was, well, a bunch of things. But first and foremost, I immediately sent Allison and Ann a proposed a resolution that will go on to Equity and Excellence in their committee agenda. We just haven't, in between the time, we, we don't meet until next month, but it's on the agenda. I'm actually going to link the calendar invite as soon as possible in there. Even though the agenda isn't built, that resolution is in there. If you haven't seen it, you know, we can share it around at some point. Essentially, it's our, doubling down our commitment to make schools a safe place for our students and families. And really, it's pretty much tasking me with making sure that we, we do that in terms of training, support, communications, and what we can do. So that's something that's really important to us. There's a lot of things that are going on and I want to clarify some things and I will continue to do that with the plan. But first and foremost, our schools and students and staff safety is, is my number one priority. It's administration's number one priority always. What, what we've done to maintain the safety of our students and staff on, prior to January 19th, is the exact same as after January 19th. And we are going to double down on that. So for example, a lot came out recently about, you know, organizations like ICE being able to come in and take our students and things like that. We will not allow that. We didn't allow it before and we won't allow it now or ever. One of the, thank you. One of, one of the things, or, or anybody really for that matter, I, nobody can come in and take a child. That's, that's how it goes. No one can come in and take a child unless you are registered to take that child. So I know sometimes asking for your IDs becomes a hassle. Like, you know who I am, I'm Christina, I pick up my kid every day, don't you know me? I know that it's frustrating, but it's for our safety. We've been doing that for a little while now, we want to double down on that. Please make sure you have your ID. Please make sure that the list of people who can pick up your child is updated. Because if someone comes to say they can and they're not on the list, we are not letting them go with that adult. That is really important. The other thing is access to student information. We do not give out any student information ever, nor will we, unless there is a legal requirement through a court-ordered subpoena. So the police, the Middlesex County prosecutors, you all, you want to come in and you want access to student records? It's a no-go, no-fly zone, we don't allow it. If we get a court-ordered subpoena signed by a judge that says we need this particular information, we comply with just that particular information. I will give you a very good example, there was an incident involving some students at one of the schools. Parents of victims of the student wanted to press charges, so they went to the police and pressed charges. The police got a court-ordered subpoena asking for student records just for that disciplinary infraction. That's it. So it wasn't like we handed over an entire list of student records to somebody. It was very specific, we gave them exactly what we needed because there was a court-ordered, signed by a judge. So in terms of administrative warrants, we don't do that. Somebody can't just come and say, well, because I am a federal agent, I have access. We don't comply with that. We might adjust our language to clarify that in the policy, which I think would be important to do. But those are areas that we will communicate strongly to our staff. Some areas that we're, we're looking at tightening up, which we've been talking about in our safety committee. So for those who, who don't know, in my tenure as superintendent, the safety of our students and staff, we've increased that a lot in our safety committee work and I'm really proud of that work. And some of the things that have been on our radar recently, prior to January 19th, was after-school safety of our students during after-school and evening events. So we are working on plans to do so, that will never be disclosed or released because that's confidential information. As I've said in the past, with our safety plan and the location of our students, I'm going to reiterate this again. Do not tell people where they are. If we have a reunification, do not put out on social media where our students are. If we have a safety plan and you know what it is, do not share it. If we have a safety plan and you know what it is, do not share it. Right? Those are our internal security documents. So we are going to do our part as a district to make sure people are safe, our students are safe, our staff are safe. But it takes a village. I know that when situations happen, we're, we're scared for our, our, our friends, are scared for our students, scared for our, our, our children. But please know that they are in really good hands. But also we need to encourage people to come to school for safety purposes. One of the things that's really important here is that some of our families are really scared. They have reached out already saying, I'm not going to send my child to school because I'm scared. What do I do? And we are having conversations with them. Yes, they can homeschool. That is an option. We can give you the options. However, if you decide to not communicate that and keep your child home and we don't know why, at some point it triggers a legal obligation that we have to report that as child abuse and neglect. Because legally you have a responsibility to send your child to some form of schooling. If that happens, unfortunately, I have a legal responsibility as a district to contact state agency of the, the Division of Child and Family Services. And now I have to tell them that you're not coming to school and now they're going to investigate. I don't want that. I didn't want it before. I certainly don't want it now for some of our families. So it's actually important that we encourage people to come to school, but to reach out, to know how we're, how we're doing the safety and security. So I feel confident that either through the resolution as it's entailed or additional items or tweaks that need to be made, um, that we will pass this resolution, which is demanding that I give you certain, uh, you know, plans for thirty, sixty, ninety days and beyond to make sure that our students are safe and, and I'm very committed to doing that work. The leadership team is meeting tomorrow to go through, uh, some of the recommendations, even the recommendations that came out of the county office. We took, we might not take because we don't agree with all of them. So we will go through, um, you know, and make sure that we go through with a five-tooth comb to be able to communicate that back as needed. I know unfortunately, community-wise, our meetings are only once a month, but there will be more communication now from my office as we develop that plan. Um, and as we adapt, you know, some resolutions to make sure that, um, we're all committed to, uh, the safety of our students and our families. So I can't stress that enough. Um, I'm, feel like I'm sure I'm missing some things. I will also say I'm in contact with community leaders. I know Allison mentioned that, um, Ann as well. So I'm working with South Caperdale now to coordinate for our training for our staff and support for our staff, uh, through Seth and the work that he has done. Um, in addition, I have been in touch with, uh, Rick Abrams, with the Chief of Police, because I want to make sure we're all in, in compliance. And he actually wanted me to share some information as well publicly, um, that, um, they don't, they cannot assist with ICE. That is not their role and responsibility. Uh, so I don't know what public forums they ever had for communicating this. So I wanted to speak, he said I could speak, that they have, uh, they cannot assist with ICE. Um, they have their own protocols to report if they, if, ICE attempts to contact them and use them, use their facilities or try to, to get knowledge, but they have the same requirements that we do. They can't give out information of community members, students, parents, anybody in the community, um, with an administrative warrant. It has to be judicial as well. Uh, so he wanted me to reiterate that. Um, so they do have state guidelines to notify if, um, ICE does contact them, but they are not allowed to give support. They are not allowed to give access. Um, and then if there is contact, they have to report it immediately. He mentioned some form and I'm sorry, I didn't write, write it down, but I'm sure it can go through the mayor's office on what that form is actually called. But they actually do have to report, they have a legal requirement to report out when they are contacted. So he did want to, uh, reiterate that, that he is in lockstep and our, our same feelings about making sure our, our students, um, our staff, um, our, our caregivers, our community members and, and everyone in Highland Park, uh, feels, feels safe. So I wanted to, uh, pass, uh, pass that along and that will work in step to make sure that, um, that we are lockstep along the way. And I think that's all for now. More to come.
Can I ask a quick question just on that last one? Thank you so much for that thorough, um, analysis of and discussion of what you're already doing and plan to continue doing. Um, but the Highland Park, I know you said, uh, Chief Abrams said that if they are contacted, I'm assuming he meant by if the department is contacted by ICE, then they have to report that they were contacted, even though they don't have to.
Correct. Even though they don't have to comply with the request, they do have to report if they're contacted.
And that report is, goes to the state, the county, I mean, who are they?
Yeah, I, I didn't ask too many questions. I'm so sorry. I can follow up with him. I didn't ask too many questions, other than I wrote if contacted, an immediate report and then I didn't.
Yeah, I'm just thinking it's good to know, like, you know, if our police department is being contacted and, you know, but yeah, just thinking about that is important and knowing that. So.
Absolutely. And, and I think that's important too, because then, you know, and this is something that they've always, it's always been in place. So that, which I was like, oh, I had no idea that that was a thing that they had to do. So it's actually good to know. And maybe something that, you know, at the safety committee meetings or just in general, when my, our monthly meetings with the mayor, something that we could ask for feedback, because it may be, you know, um, just information to have to know to what extent is our community being targeted by that. I mean, if the numbers are low, you know, that's reassuring, right? If our numbers are high, that's concerning. So I, you know, maybe something that we could talk to the mayor about, um, in terms of, of access to that information.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
We'll look forward to discussing the resolution.
Yeah.
Um, and I did just want to say that, you know, I, I think we are all here very, very grateful, um, that we do have the resources in this town to that support immigrants the way, um, that they do and the people who have reached out with their own resources to try to help us as we're, you know, everyone, we didn't get guidance from the state until like late on Wednesday, or maybe it was even Thursday on how to interpret the executive order. So, you know, the fact that everyone has really been trying to come together in order to protect our kids and our families is really, um, heartening in a difficult time.
So just to reiterate, like, even though we are still working on the resolution and Monique is going to work on it committee, the training starts immediately for staff, um, because one of the, one of the key ways that, um, Dr. Siska is, is targeting this is by empowering staff with information so that everybody is on the same page, right? Um, and then a lot of this other, you know, other ways that we can help is really going to be, have, have to be teamwork between us and the community. Because there are going to be things that we can do as a district and there are going to be things that we can't do as a district. Um, so, you know, working together to find ways that we can assist in disseminating information, um, that we can assist in power, um, you know, empowering people with information, um, and finding ways that we can like link families with resources. And, um, especially for the students that are impacted, finding ways to, uh, provide those services in school as well. Um, will be like, you know, definitely part of what the district does. And then just making sure that we're, you know, staying up to date with everything that's, um, being updated and all the guidance that's being released and re-released and, and all of that and changed and updated and. Yep. And I think the best thing that, one of the best things that we can do is try to limit the spread of misinformation, um, which is there's just so much going around, um, in terms of like rumors about what's happening in other schools and like nothing's very clear. So as best as we can is to just try to like, you know, share what we know is fact and, um, try not to get too worked up about things that we're not certain about.
Yeah, I'm glad you emphasized that immediate rest, um, education for teachers and awareness, because I'm just thinking about how staff must be feeling this past week. Um, and I know obviously administration is doing everything you can with the information you have to, to support them and make everyone feel like, okay, we're in this together. But I, I just, I know emotionally it's a lot. It's been a lot, I'm sure, for the teachers.
Yeah, I was going to say, I do want to add part of our training and doubling down our efforts. I know I was really hyper bring on safety and security, which is obviously always my number one priority. Uh, but including that is psychological safety, which is the work that, that, you know, obviously our teen and tween center, our school counselors and our staff provide. Um, so we are including our plan to making sure we're doubling down on targeting, um, our students that might need some more trauma-informed care because this, this is, you know, uh, very traumatic to even think about, whether you are, um, you know, a, a student that is an immigrant student, undocumented student, come from, you know, an immigrant family or a staff member or a peer and, and, and it, your friends are going through it, you know, or your peers are going through it. It's not easy to process all this information, especially in an age where you, you scroll and scroll and scroll and you could go down a rabbit hole and, and it can get, it can be a lot. Um, so I just encourage the same is, you know, fact-check as much as you can. Honestly, try to stay off social media as much as possible. Um, I think that, you know, for people's mental health and, and, and social emotional well-being might be helpful too. And just reach out if you need support. Our, our teen center and tween center are available for counseling. Our school counselors are available and our administrative staff are available. And, and of course, all of our trusting adults are available as well to anybody that, that might need that support. Or if you know somebody that needs the support, please have them reach out. Um, and we'll make sure to, to, uh, you know, our crisis response team is, is pretty much on full activation mode and will continue to be so.
Thank you for all you're doing.
There any other new business?
Uh, I just want to remind anyone listening that we do have our strategic planning focus group, uh, tomorrow here at seven PM. Um, this one is focused on academic rigor. Uh, there will be babysitting. Uh, so please come, uh, if you would like your voice heard. And Spanish translation.
All right. And with that, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good week, everyone.